Good evening, everyone. Prior to us coming back into open session, I'd like to refer anyone who needs translation services to Ms. Paula Valbuena at the podium.
Thank you, President Brown. Buenas tardes. I'm Paula Valbuena. She needs to get services for the Spanish translation. Please call 18-05-3-24-7-6-80 and enter the code of access 281-0-0-0-3-27 plus the number key. This is a totally free number. Again, call 18-05-3-24-7-6-80 and enter the code of access 281-0-0-0-3-27 plus the number key. You can also access these instructions on our website, MCS4Kids.com, by clicking on the lower part of the page by clicking on Quick Links and clicking again on Board Agenda to go to the agenda this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to welcome all of you to the Modesto City Schools' regular board meeting of April 17th, 2023. This meeting is now called to order. In closed session, the board gave direction to staff, and we're going to take roll this So first, Student Board Representative Darra Patel.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Here.
Trustee Lopez is absent this evening. Trustee Maestas.
Here.
Trustee Marks.
Here.
Trustee Mahia.
Here.
Vice President Irvin.
Here.
And President Brown. I too am here. So we do have a quorum. We can move forward with the meeting. Please stand and join us for a moment of silence. Well, good evening, everyone. This open session meeting of the Board of Trustees is being livestreamed at the direction of the board. The livestream is available on the district's website, and the recordings will be available for viewing the day after the board meeting. MCS, Modesto City Schools, has provided an opportunity for the public to provide comments. It is outlined on the agenda. The public has been given an opportunity to call in and leave a voicemail, send us a comment via email, or appear in person before the board. Any public comments received via email or voicemail following the posting of the board agenda and prior to noon the day of the board meeting will not be read aloud, but have been transcribed and printed with copies provided to each board member prior to the start of the board meeting and are available to the public. The voice and email public comments will be attached to a future board meeting minutes for approval. This practice will continue until further notice. For members of the public that are interested in commenting in the future, we welcome your If you wish to address the board during the period for public comment on a subject not on the agenda, you must complete a public presentation request card and submit it to the board president prior to the period for public comment. If you need assistance from our translator, please indicate so on the request card. Every person who wishes to address the board, please fill out a card. You will find the cards in the lobby, and you can hand your card to Ms. Chambers in the back of the room. Chambers is raising her hand back there. I also want to remind you that if you wish to make a complaint against a specific district employee, you should follow the district's personnel complaint procedure. Copies of that procedure are available in the lobby, as are agenda copies which outline the procedures we will observe during the period for public comment. The right to address the board does not exempt the speaker from any potential liability for defamation. If you plan to speak on a topic, please fill out a card now, as no cards will be accepted after the period for public comment has begun. The maximum time for any one speaker is three minutes for a total of 30 minutes. Now we've moved to the Agenda Item A5, Pledge of Allegiance, and we are pleased to welcome two students from Rose Avenue Elementary School to lead us in the flag salute tonight. The first student is Zane Williams. Zane, would you stand? Sixth grader Zane is a member of the Student Council and Traffic Safety Patrol. He's an outstanding scholar who works hard in school and is a friend to all. Zane enjoys playing soccer and video games. Following college, he would like to one day be a chief of police. The second student, also from Rose Avenue, is Larry Thornsberry. Sixth grader Larry is the Student Council President. He's a member of the band, Rise, and the After School Education and Safety Program. Larry is a talented public speaker and exceptional scholar. He enjoys playing baseball and video games, and following college, he would like to join the Army. So please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, gentlemen.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
and announcements.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see so many people out in the audience. It's always great to see and hear from those community members and staff and others, just as it relates to items on our agenda and others. So thank you for attending. Tonight, it is my pleasure to introduce our two newest principals that we are going to be welcoming to our leadership team. When I call you, if you could please stand to be recognized. First, I am thrilled to announce that we have a new principal joining us from Merced Unified. Please join me in welcoming Anthony Arista. Anthony comes to us. Anthony comes to us with a wealth of experience, serving 22 years in education. Anthony has held a variety of positions, including principal middle school, high school, and most importantly, a K-8, as Tuolumne is a K-8. Through the selection process, I learned a lot about Anthony, as did the team, and he has a clear track record in not only being a collaborative leader, but an instructional leader, and most importantly, the collaboration that is going to be helpful for our staff and our students as Tuolumne continues to grow in their development of becoming a STEAM Academy. Please join me in extending a warm welcome to Anthony. Secondly, I am equally thrilled to announce that after serving a time as interim principal, Fook Fam Gulart has been named the permanent principal at Modesto High School. There she is. Welcome. Fook truly has done an exceptional job leading Modesto High over this last six months. She has demonstrated a deep commitment to the teachers and the staff at Mohi, along with the community. She has worked tirelessly to create a positive-supporting learning environment for all the kids and the staff over at Mohi. Fook comes to us with a long history of experience here in Modesto City, and I have her resume in front of me. She started as a special day class teacher at Franklin Elementary for six years. She then moved into becoming a resource specialist and later a program manager for special education, so eight years with experience in special ed, which is going to serve Modesto High well. After that, she served as assistant principal for eight years at Johansson. So again, Fook comes with a wealth of experience that I know is going to be a benefit to Mohi and the community over there. Please join me in congratulating Fook Fam Gulart for her new role as Modesto High School principal and in welcoming her to the new chapter of Mohi's history. And I'll turn it back over to you, President Brown.
Thank you. And Mr. Arista, welcome home. And glad to have you in that new role, Ms. Fam Gulart. Now we'll move to A7, Board of Education Member Reports. Does anyone have reports for us this evening? Everybody's had a chance to weigh in, so it looks like you're up first, Vice President Irvin.
Yes, a couple of things. I got a chance with several of my other colleagues to attend the Eddie Awards over at Downey High School last week. A great occasion, a lot of wonderful students being awarded the Eddie Awards. It's been going on in this district for many years. I don't know who Eddie is, but his award is being bestowed on our students in Modesto City Schools. Also got a chance to, today I went over to Davis High School for their health fair and learned a lot. Our students over there at Davis and the Health Academy are really up on their health careers. Health careers and those ailments are, you know, issues we have in our society, and they were giving presentations. You know, I went to like six different presentations from ovarian cancer, diabetes, different careers, veterinarians, forensic pathologists, just a wealth, and they gave presentations, excellent presentations on those areas. But it was a really well put together event, attended by a lot of students, got a chance to interact with staff over there as well. So the Davis Health Academy is really, really flourishing over there with some really outstanding students and teachers. That's it for me.
Thank you. Oh, Trustee Marks, hit the wrong button. Sorry, everybody.
That's okay. Thank you. Thank you. And so I just had a few that I wanted to talk about. I visited Downey High School and their construction education showcase, which was so fabulous. It's where the students are building things and putting tile down, learning all the things from the trades about construction, electricity. The mayor came. It was awesome. Superintendent was there, Chamber of Commerce was there, and they came from all over. Different school districts came in to see our program because it's so phenomenal, and so it was awesome to spend a few hours, a little time with that program and hear all about it. So I'm really pleased to see what's happening, and we're hopeful. I don't know if this will happen, but you know how some of you go down coffee and you see them building those little structures out there? Hopefully someday we can get a partnership with the city, and instead of tearing them all apart, we can use them for some really helpful housing for people who need some housing. Sorry, I got tickled. For people in a place where they can have a small dwelling. Just a little cough there. Allergies this time of the year. Boy, it used to be scary when you cough up here, and it was during COVID. Everybody wants to leave the room, right? So we're past all that. Oh, thank you. That gave me a cough drop. And then I, we, many of us, almost the entire board, did the day, we spent a whole day on policy, and I think we did over 60 policies that day, so we moved a couple of them to discussion to bring to a regular board meeting. So it was a great day to go over that. It took us many hours. I think we were here for almost six hours, and so that was a long Saturday. And then I went to the boundaries meeting at Gregory High School, which was awesome, just to be able to be with our staff and hear what's happening and the community and some input on that. And I attended the Parents Leading Change, which was formerly the Dr. Parker Committee. Great agenda. We had a lot that we accomplished. I see a couple of members here in the audience tonight, too. And then Eddies, those of us who attended the Eddies, just so you know, the Eddies was shortened from the Character Education Awards. So they changed it into the Eddies Award. So it was kind of an honor to have the Eddies and so to mimic some of the other ones in our public. So thank you for that, and I've had a very busy three weeks. It's been awesome, though.
Great. Trustee Maestas. And note, I hit the right button this time.
All right. Ooh, that one's hot. Thanks. I have, I don't have much of a report, actually. I just wanted to say that I know that many students are starting their testing, their CASP testing this week, next week, and I know that some students are anxious, some teachers are anxious, and I just want them all to know, you know, do your best. That's all anybody ever wants of our students, is to do their best and show everyone what they know. That's it. And so I want to, I want to thank our kids for hanging in there and taking those tests, our third graders, eighth graders, and our 11th graders across the district. I want to thank our transportation for getting our kids to school, the nutrition for providing important nutrition in the morning and at lunch to keep our kids going through this testing season, the teachers for getting them there, to teaching them all the things they need to know for this test, and then the admin for putting it all together. So it takes a huge effort to do these next two weeks, and so I just want to thank everybody and tell all the kids that we'll, that at least, we're all thinking of them as they go through the next couple of weeks. That's it.
Right. Trustee Daly.
I'm gonna mimic on Trustee, or Trustee Marks's comment about the board policies meeting that was six hours, and those are some of the daunting things that we do as the board, but what makes it worth it is the ability to go to the Eddies and see all the kids' personalities in coming up to accept their awards. It was really a great evening just to watch everybody and how excited the parents were, as well as then to go to the schools and do an open house. I did an open house at La Loma, and learning all about the programs and seeing some of the projects that the kids have done over the years, I think that, or over the year. I think that's just a great opportunity to get out and know that there is a reason that we sit for hours doing this. It's because the kids are impacted, and it's impacted greatly, and the change that's going to continue to happen in Modesto, I'm excited to watch.
I would like to just capitalize on what's been said about the Eddies. The film industry has the Oscars. The television industry has the Tonys. Modesto City School honors are outstanding.
Character education.
Character education efforts by our students with the Eddies. So that was a great event and lots of fun, to see the character of students that are leaders of our future. So lots of great opportunities. I'm glad to see that our board members have been out and able to see our students showing off their, what they're learning. And I also want to remind my fellow board members that we have the Trustees Dinner sponsored by the county next, I believe, Thursday. So keep that on your calendar. We'll be there as a board, and excited to see some representation of some of our own students in that meeting that night. All right. Let's see. Next, we move to Item A8, Recognitions, and I'm going to turn the microphone over to Ms. Mumma Solorio.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Superintendent, Dr. Superintendent, Dr. Noguchi, and all of you that are here joining us this evening. This is one of my favorite times of the meeting because we get to recognize our students, our teachers, and staff for their hard work, their dedication, and of course, their innovation. And so tonight, we are celebrating an outstanding scholar, ninth grade student Maximus Ibanez, for the character trait Responsibility. So here to read the nomination is classroom teacher Bryce Davies, and also here tonight in support is principal Fook Fam Gulart. So let's have all three of you come on up while Mr. Davies tells us a little bit more about Maximus. Hand you the microphone.
Of course. Before reading what I have written here, I do have to state, Max, in your senior year, congratulations on making it all the way here. I'm very excited to see Max here at the finish line, to be very clear. I've known him over the past three years, and the amount of growth and the way, I want to say it, to get to experience your growth and development standing next to you, I couldn't be prouder, man. We put a lot of time investment in you, and what we're getting out of it, amazing. You're a fantastic guy, man. Just to read what was written? Of course, those are my words I threw on there. Got to hold it upright. Maximus Ibanez, my mistake there, is a senior who has demonstrated unwavering dedication to our Performing Arts Academy and the Modesto High Theater Department. He stays after school every day to manage theater rehearsals and leads our Performing Arts Academy organization with such gratitude and positivity. Many days, it seems as though Max has superpowers because he never seems to falter. I know that it is, it is his true desire to be a responsible member of our school and a performing arts team that fuels his undying energy and loyalty to our school. He has a gentle soul, and he helps all of us understand what it means to be a good human being. Max is extremely deserving of this Character Education Award. Congratulations so much, Maximus.
All right. Tonight, we are also recognizing an outstanding MCS staff member who is nominated as an MCS hero. So Vice Principal of Burbank Elementary, Samora Mellor, is here tonight to tell us a little bit more about Maribel Perrell. So ladies, come on up, and I'll hand you the microphone, and you can face the audience. Oh, you're right there.
I can't say enough about Ms. Perrell. As a yard duty during the school day and an after-school education safety leader in the afternoon, Ms. Perrell works to provide consistency for students that is beneficial to their continued learning. She's a team player, and whenever she is asking to support, her response is always, "No problem. We're a team, and we have to work together. I'm always happy to help." She's extremely positive, spunky, and creative. Maribel's positive attitude helps to create a positive culture at Burbank. She holds her fellow staff members as well, as well as her students, to a high standard of work and accountability. Maribel works with administrators to provide opportunities for students and families to create positive bonding experiences. Maribel is a great communicator and excellent role model, and Burbank is lucky to have her as part of our team.
Okay, now we'll move to Item A9, which is Approval of the Consent Agenda. Are there any comments regarding the consent agenda items from the public? Saying none, do we have any comments or questions from the board? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Trustee Mark, second by Trustee Daly. Those in favor? Aye. Do we need to do a roll call? No, okay. All right. Voting was unanimous. Next is Item A10, Approval of the Order of Discussion and Action Items. Do I hear a motion to approve the order of discussion and action items? Trustee Mahia, and second by the other trustee, M., Trustee Maestas? Actually, we have three Ms. Those in favor? Aye. And that also passes unanimously. Thank you. We've now come to Section A11 on the agenda, the period for public presentations. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting and showing interest in our schools. I have eight cards in, that have been given to me, and there is actually a ninth card, but it is referring to something that is on the agenda, so we'll invite that person to speak at that time. Let's see. Our first speaker tonight is Veronica, is it Ambrose? Please come forward and introduce yourself and share with us your comment.
Hello, my name's Veronica Ambrose. You heard of them? I am a community organizer with Mohi Pride, and we're here today just to check in with you because we had some concerns from some students and parents. So there's no, no good way to jump into this, and I apologize that I don't have a more formal speech ready like I normally enjoy to do, so this is a bit off the cuff, but I will try to keep it brief. This year, there has already been 395 anti-trans bills put up in 45 different states throughout our country. Of those bills, 87 are directly linked with education in school and 56 are linked with youth sports. These are targeting our trans youth. As a community, are scared. We're frustrated. We are mad that we are seeing these stepbacks for our community and for rights of our youth and of everybody, right? Because we know that these attacks do not stop here. In that, I wanted to thank Modesto City Schools for all you do to comply with California law and ensure that our trans youth do have the support that is outlined, and I ask you to continue doing that and to be more outspoken in support of LGBTQ youth and families in the community. As tomorrow is Holocaust Remembrance Day, I feel it is appropriate to quote Eli wisely with, "We must always take sides. Neutrality helps the oppressor, never the victim. Silence encourages the tormentor, never the tormented. The opposite of love is not hate, it is indifference." Thank you for the time. I will yield the rest.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Blake Mitten.
Hi, all. First, before I begin, I just want to echo the congratulations to Ms. Fong-Gulart. She's a great addition to Modesto High. So as a staff member, I want to just echo and reinforce what was said earlier. You know, I just want to come up here briefly, you know, and I had seen that there were going to be some speakers addressing transgender issues, and I want to read, this is from the news from today, and it was from a state senator in another state, but referring to transgender people, the individual said, "It's like I'm watching, we have mutants living among us. The Lord rebuke you, Satan, and all the demons and all your hems." And this kind of charged language, our students hear this clearly, and you know, when we think about the character traits and what we do here as an institution, preparing young people to be adults who are safe, educated, prepared for the workforce, prepared to be citizens, active citizens, you know, the first step is safety, I think, and all these things. And so, you know, when we think about something like, if we were to add something like empathy, sometimes empathy is easy, you know, thinking, having empathy towards somebody who has lost somebody, or having empathy towards somebody who has financial difficulty, but thinking about somebody who is transgender and really having empathy, authentic empathy, for what it's like to hear that, what I just read, and what it's like to walk through. I've been teaching for 29 years. I've never had a straight student have an issue with a transgender student, causing them stress or difficulty, but I've had suicidal students come to me who are transgender, who are dealing with this type of stress, to where I've had to do the mental health referral and things like this. And beyond that, I have personal connections that connect to today. But regardless, as we move forward, you know, I just hope that we'll, you know, have these values inform our decision-making, okay? Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Riley Thompson.
Hello. My name is Riley Thompson. I'm here today to talk to you about trans youth. So to start off, I am a transgender woman. I actually am a teacher, too. I teach through Modesto City Schools, through Kids Camp, from MJC. And I'm pretty much, in my years of teaching, I've had some students come up to me, and they see, you know, that I'm also trans based off my pin and the flags that I carry. And I even have the students that come up to me and tell me that they're trans, too, but are too afraid to even come out to their family and friends. In my classroom, I create a safe space for them. I try to make it more welcoming and make it easier for them to be their true authentic selves. Right now, as my previous people have said, right now, there's been a lot of attacks on the transgender community. And it's been hard, not only for people like me, but even our the kids as well. Right now, they're being forced to, like, going to bathrooms that don't align with their gender. They're, they've been discriminated. They've been targeted. And right now, I'm here to say, for Modesto City Schools, thank you for all of the work that you do, and I wish that things would be better, and I hope you guys will continue protecting these trans students. Because with all of these attacks that are happening, it's only a matter of time before things start breaking out worse. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I also wanted to add that I'm also a mother. I have a son, and his name is Oliver. I want to make sure that when he grows up, sorry, when he grows up, that he grows up in a school where he's actually welcomed and safe. And right now, the way things are, especially with all the targets, it's not entirely safe in some areas, and I feel like the areas that are safe, they're being challenged. So the only thing I would ask is for you to uphold your challenge, do everything that your guys' power to do to protect these students, like how you have been. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. I'm going to admit that my eyesight is not as good as I wish it was. I have the last name, Delta, and I am hesitant to attempt a name that may not be correct. So if you would introduce yourself when you come forward, please.
Good evening, esteemed board members, colleagues, students, parents, guardians, and other fellow community members. My name is Andor Delta, and I am an English teacher at Byer High School. I'm here tonight to speak in support of transgender students in our district. I've interacted with many students over my career, and transgender students are far more similar to their non-transgender peers than they are different. Transgender students want what all students want, a supportive place to learn and grow and build connections. Unfortunately, I know from experience that some would have this opportunity taken away. This evening, I am not just speaking to you as a teacher. I am an alum of Byer High School, of Modesto City Schools. I've been a member of this community since I was born, and when I finished my undergraduate education, I returned to reinvest the knowledge I had gained back into the community that had invested in me. I am now an academic researcher in the area of education. I received my Master of Arts degree in education from California State University Stanislas, and I am the lead researcher of a study of transgender students. All of the academic research I have ever reviewed is clear. Transgender students are objectively far, far more likely to experience harassment than to perpetrate it. As education professionals, it is our responsibility to ensure all students have an equal opportunity to an equitable education. As education professionals, we do not have the right to prioritize the access of some students over another. Our students deserve our best every day. The law is clear. The research is clear. And now, it's up to us. Thank you to everyone who is showing up and doing their part to support transgender students. Thank you to the board members, community members, parents, everyone who has a hand in supporting our students. Good night.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Steve Allen.
Good evening. How's it going? I just want to say thanks to the previous speakers. They've made some amazing points. I am also here tonight out of concern to just ask you guys to make sure that you continue, to make sure that transgender students within MCS are treated fairly, are protected, et cetera. We do know that in the state of California, thank God, we have a law that keeps a lot of the things that we've been seeing in national news from happening here. Kind of, there's like two themes that have been going through my head, and some of the comments from the previous speakers got me a little bit emotional, so I feel like if I heard some kids start reciting the Peace Builders pledge, I'll just start bawling, so don't anybody do that. But looking around the room at these character traits, one of the gentlemen brought that up, I think it's kind of good to, it creates a good physical environment to discuss these things. The other thing is that we live in a disgusting world. We're a very, very ugly place, and everyone knows that the moment you turn on the news, you see a lot of that. One specific area that's very heartbreaking is just all of the attacks against transgender people in all kinds of environments. I don't need to summarize all that for you guys. I'm sure you guys all have the internet. But kind of, there's like that double theme, right? And I wanted to share really quickly, I talk too much, and I know I'm running out of time, from my own life. I grew up in the area. I grew up in a Christian family. I was religious for some time. I have come, gone on a very different path. I'm not a man of faith anymore, but the morals that I gained from my loving parents in that environment have definitely shaped who I am. There's a memory that I have that's played a big role in this of, around the time I was going through the whole process of figuring myself out and losing my faith, I recall saying something disgusting to a friend of mine who at the time was coming out, and she was a church friend who is now a very proud and inspiring lesbian, and she's a teacher at Stan State, and she's pre-rad, so is her partner. But I said something related to transgender people that I'm not proud of, and basically what I want to say right now is I get that people, this is a very religious area, living here in the Central Valley, people can have their own views, but what we see going on in the world is something far uglier than that. We see Proud Boys showing up to harass and frighten innocent people that are doing their damnedest to make this a better place and keep people safe and help people be empowered to live their lives. I remember having to work through some horrible attitudes that I had, and that was a personal thing. And despite where I was at with my faith or where it led me, what I want to say is, I managed to do that because I'm not a hateful person, and I did not let my religious background turn me into the kind of person that would want other people to feel bad about who they are, let alone feel unsafe in schools. And I just want to say that, you know, any opinions you get from parents or community members on the other side of things, you know, that's for them to work out, just as I had to do many years ago, to confront my own bigotry. We do live in a state where our students are protected, and I just want to ask you to continue to make transgender students not only safe in our schools, but empowered to be who they are as individuals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patricia Gay.
Hello. I'm Patricia Gay. I am a parent of children here at Modesto City Schools, and I just came out here today. A friend of mine wanted to be here, and she has a hard time speaking in public, so I said I would come out and make sure that I let you guys know to say thank you for the support that you have been offering. And, you know, I know you guys only have so much in your powers, the school district, and that you are following the laws of the state of California that do protect trans people in our community. And, you know, also that it, from, you know, my experiences and talking with other people, that you guys are working hard to follow your mission of creating a safe and welcoming learning and working environment, as well as making data-driven decisions. So I just wanted to say thank you and show up today. Thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cheryl Nelson.
Hi. I just wanted to echo a lot of what the speakers are saying here this evening. We anticipated some people coming and speaking not kindly about our students in the LGBTQ community, and I'm glad to see that that does not seem to be the case. And I hope it's not the case in the future and that we continue to voice our support for students. As, and I'm, by the way, I'm the instructional coach at Byer High School, and Andor is my colleague, and I really appreciate them bringing up particularly the data, so that I don't have to talk all about data. But I was a health education teacher for many years and worked on health education policy and curriculum, and I don't know if folks remember that a couple of years ago, the Surgeon General came out and said that teen mental health is at a crisis level and releases particular, and released an advisory in 2021. And if you are still researching and reading up on that, you might have noticed that just last month, the results from the 2021 Youth Risk Behavior Survey, a national survey that tells us a lot about what we know about how our youth are doing, our teens in particular and preteens, came out, that data came out from the 2021 survey just last month, and it's a dismal, it's really, it's terrifying to see how students are doing even worse than they were at the height of the pandemic. And all of the data, as Andor mentioned, is worse for our students who are in the LGBTQ community and for our trans students, our gender non-conforming students. And I just wanted to remind everyone of the importance of, as educators, continuing our own education and reading up on these issues as much as we can. There's so much to learn, and doing everything we can to not just follow the laws, but continually voice our support for our most vulnerable students. Thank you for all that you all do.
Thank you. That's the, appears to be the end of our public comment, and again, we thank you. Well, have I missed one? I think the eighth is the one that's going to be later in the meeting. It's related to an issue on the agenda. So... Was it, is that correct, Antoinette? I don't believe I'm missing any. I don't believe I'm missing any. Okay. Okay. So I'm, I'm going to stand corrected. I'm going to invite Amanda Vanderheiden to come forward, and please forgive us for this correction.
I almost fully expected it. So, my name is Amanda Vanderheiden. I am here, and obviously there is great support for the trans community. I'm not here to debate that, I'm not here to debate the state laws, that is not what I'm here for. What I am here for is to ensure and to make everyone aware that in our striving to support the trans community and to enforce these state laws, that there are things occurring on your campuses that are infringing on the rights of other students, and there has to be a divide where you guys are able to accommodate both. Myself, I'm a mother of a student, two students, at Bayer High School. There has been several incidences recently that I've brought to Bayer High School's attention that they have failed to address that protects my children's right to freedom of religion. As a Christian, the Bible is very, very clear that not until marriage was Adam and Eve allowed to be naked together without shame or sin. It also states that your body does not belong to you, belongs to God, and to defile the body is to defile your spirit. My child, last Thursday, and this is not the first time, last Thursday, my daughter contacted me and said, "Mom, I don't know what to do because I have to change for PE, and there's a boy in the locker room, and I'm not comfortable changing in front of him." I contacted my, I expressed my daughter, "Don't change then if you're not comfortable. If the teacher has an issue, have her contact me, and we will discuss this to come up with some different arrangements." Teacher did not do so. I contacted the school and I said, you know, "This is an issue. I need to know that my daughter's religious freedoms are being protected." She has now been docked in her class for nonparticipation and tardiness for not dressing out because there's not an alternative. That male student was not in the period to be in the female locker room, was not his PE class, should not have been in there. My daughter was not, and my daughter and multiple girls who felt uncomfortable were not provided alternatives to change. Instead, their education is now suffering, and they were marked unsatisfactory citizenship, and we were told that it's something they just have to get over. Friday, groups of the same group refused to allow my daughter to enter the female restroom, stood in front of the door, and when she tried to get past them, they hit her with her backpack. So while people say that there's no incidences of harassment going the other direction, that is just not true. School did nothing about it even after a witness statement was written. Today, at the beginning of school, those same students proceeded to follow my daughter and her friend around and call them vulgar names and body-shame them, just as they have done for months, with no consequence. I was, brought this to these school districts' attention, and I was told in the exact words that it's my fault because I chose to live in a liberal state, and if I don't like it, move. I don't understand how that's acceptable. I believe that my daughter's constitutional right to freedom of religion supersedes state law, and you guys are tasked with creating a situation where you can respect the rights of the trans community without taking away the rights of others, and that is not what's happening in your public school system right now. So, just so everyone is aware, despite the testimonies that have been made and the claims that it's not going both directions, my child is now afraid to go to school as a result of two boys trying to beat her up and physically assault her with no consequence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So again, although we cannot engage in discussion or take formal action on items not on the agenda, we thank all of you for following the protocol and addressing the board and for taking the time to address and share your views with us this evening. So we'll now move to item B1 on our agenda. This is a report by our student representative to the board, Ms. Darah Patel.
Thank you, President Brown. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's had a great Monday. Little bit of an oxymoron because great and Monday don't usually go together. This past month, our inner high council has been busy with their respective school activities. Some schools like Bayer and Enoch's have started their proms, and all of our high schools have fun and exciting spirit and end-of-year activities ahead. Before I discuss what we've been doing as inner high council for the past month, a couple of weeks ago, I met with Mr. Herbst, and we discussed school climate, ranging from emphasizing the importance of student mental health and wellness weeks that could be implemented, showcasing healthy practices students can approach, especially like Tristina Yasa said during stressful testing time periods as they approach. We also discussed restroom conditions and potential solutions for all high school sites. From there, I met with Mr. Houck, and we went on a tour of Modesto High, kind of looking at all of the restroom conditions, kind of seeing how these can compare to other high school facilities in our district. We looked through all of the restrooms and scoped out the general atmosphere, discussing better systems and solutions that would benefit the student population, and hopefully from there, we'll be looking at some changes from the notes that we took during that time. Now for our inner high service project. So this service project has been going on for a couple of months. Originally, we wanted there to be a system implemented in which we didn't leave behind the younger children who look up to us, because so much of that voice, it's not represented here directly, but from lower levels and then up higher to high school levels. We also believe that it was important to recognize elementary and junior high students that have voices and opinions. In order to garner more of a relationship with our elementary school students, the inner high council decided to do that as sweetly as possible because we came up with the birthday in a box service project, where elementary schools would be able to essentially have a birthday party in a box. So from mid-March to the first week of April, our high school sites fundraised birthday supplies, ranging from birthday cakes, frosting toys, books, utensils, decorations, school supplies, pencils, you name it. And this past Wednesday, we gathered on, we gathered at Davis Library, and our seven high schools came together to assemble these boxes, and let me tell you, it was like a birthday threw up in there. We had more items donated than we ever expected, and though it was difficult to count them, we had like a rough estimate around 4,000 donations from all high school sites. That was amazing. And these were equally distributed between Shackelford, Orville Wright, and Franklin, with the hopes that the elementary school students who do not get to have birthday parties will be able to celebrate their birthday in a different way with as much fun and as much sweetness. So I just want to take this time to thank everyone who helped with that service project, the inner high council, for planning this at their respective sites, Mrs. Moore for supporting us and always keeping the library open for us, Mr. Schorer at Davis, and all the staff who helped us carry out those really heavy boxes to our cars. And, yeah, we just hope that with the outcome of this project, we can foster closer relations with our elementary school students as they remain an active voice in our student systems. So with that, that concludes my board report.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your leadership in serving the needs of all of our students. So next, we'll move to item B2, which is the approval of resolution number 2223-26, authorizing issuance of general obligation bond D, Series C, GO Bonds Elementary Health and Safety. And I believe I'm turning the microphone over to Mr. Zerli.
Thank you, President Brown. Good evening, trustees. Yeah, I have the next three items on here. We separated them out because they are individual resolutions. And it is, it is a little bit of a bittersweet moment for us as we're ending two bond measures and we're just starting another. We do have our bond team here with us in the audience. They've been with us ever since the passage of Measure D and E, and now the passage of Measure L. And we have our bond underwriters, Ralph Holmes and Catherine Perkins. We have our bond counsel, our bond legal counsel, Mr. Sean Mick, and our financial advisor, Jeff Small, are here to answer any questions about the resolutions and the issuance process, if any come up. On November 6, 2018, the public overwhelmingly supported the passage of elementary bond measures D and E, and as mentioned by President Brown, tonight, we're asking for the approval of Series C, which would be our third issuance, for Measure D, Resolution 22/23-26, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bond D, Series C, for health and safety.
All right. Are there any questions, any comments from the public on this agenda item? Seeing none, do we have any questions or comments from the board? Trustee Marks.
Thank you. I had a question, and it'll be on all of these, so just, I just wanted to understand it better. But on Exhibit A, the form of the bond, it has the interest rate, there's blank, the maturity date, August 1st, 20 something, so I'm assuming that'll be this year, and then dated probably tonight, but I just wanted to know, is each homeowner going to have this, is this how they're going to calculate their taxes? I wasn't sure what this was for, so if you could just help me understand that better.
I'm going to invite Jeff Small with Capital Public Finance Group to answer that question.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Brown, members of the Board of Education. That is a form of the bond itself. The interest rate will be inserted in that document when we do price the bonds in later this month, and when all the bonds are priced, there will be a final debt service schedule that gets transmitted to the county, and we will work with the county to make sure that the tax rates are in line with the promises made to the public.
Okay, so, and then they'll be paying it off depending on how long it takes on, after that's figured out, is that correct? They're only going to be paying the amount per year that we said in the item on the ballot?
Yes, the tax rate, it will be approximately that number or maybe a little bit less.
Okay, great, that's great. I just, I knew it was going to be on all of these, but I just wasn't sure, and just, it came up as I was thinking about SAPPA and CIPA and all these other boards, the JPAs, that I was thinking, okay, how does this one work for us now? Okay, so I just had, wanted to understand it better. So thank you for that, that was great clarification.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? So just want to say, and this will apply to all three, is that I'm extremely humbled every time we have an initiative come forward that is related to these bonds, with gratitude to our public for the support that allows us to improve our schools. And this is the third and final issuance of our Measure D bond funds. So great things are yet to happen at some additional campuses because of the funds that we've been entrusted with, and you can see wonderful things throughout the community that show just how powerful these efforts have been already. So great things are yet to happen, and the money will flow so that they can. And so, let's see. Do I hear a motion to approve, approval, resolution number 2223-26, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bond D, Series C, GO Bonds Elementary Health and Safety? Motion by trustee Mahia, second by vice president Irvin. Those in favor? Aye, and that was unanimous, thank you very much. We'll now move on to the next item, item B3. Approval of resolution, it's going to sound like a recording, but notice that there are some differences. Approval of resolution number 2223-27, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bond E, Series C, GO Bonds Elementary Classroom Science Lab Enhancements. Also, Mr. Zerli.
Yes, thank you. Measure E was the companion measure to Measure D passed also November 6, 2018. This as well would be the third and final series of issuance, Series C. This was a smaller authorization. This tax rate was $22 per 100,000, Measure D was $28 per 100,000, and I just want to point out, I missed earlier, we anticipate the bond sale being May 25th for all of these, both Measures D and E and Measure L. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve Resolution 2223-27, authorizing the issuance, Series C, of general obligation bond, Measure E, Classroom Science Lab Enhancements.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public regarding this, this measure? Seeing none, how about from the board? Any questions or comments? Then do I have a motion? I have to read this. Motion by trustee Marks for approval of resolution number 2223-27, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bond E, Series C, the GO Bonds for Elementary Classroom and Science Lab Enhancements. Motion by trustee Marks, second by trustee Mahia. Those in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And for our third, this is item B4, approval of resolution number 2223-28, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bond L, Series A, election, GO Bonds High School, acquisition, construction, modernization, and equipping of super, of certain improvements at district sites and facilities. Mr. Zerli.
Yes, thank you again, President Brown. This one is, is exciting as the voters passed Measure L on November 8, 2022. This will be our first series, Series A, issuance for Measure L, the first time in over 20 years that our high school district has passed a bond measure and issued a series of bonds for facility improvements. We're very excited and thankful for Measure L, $198 million in bonds. So again, we're very pleased and recommending to the board that they approve Resolution 2223-28, authorizing the issuance of Series A, general obligation bonds, Measure L, acquisition, construction, modernization, and equipping of certain improvements at district sites and facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Zerli. Any comments from the public regarding this measure? Seeing none, how about from the board? Trustee Daly.
I just want to thank Mr. Zerli for taking the time, and I apologize because I forgot her name that helped you come and take the time to educate me on the board, the bonds, and how it worked and the issuance and stuff like that, because I'd much better understand what you guys are talking about at this moment.
Thank you. That was the partner of Jeff, Kathy Dominico, with Capital Public Finance Group.
Great. So this one almost brings me to tears as I think about how close we passed this, this bond measure and the fact that we are able to move forward with improvements at our high school campuses as well. So do we have a, I hear, I hear, but I still have to read. I hear, motion to approve resolution number 2223-28, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bond L, Series A, election, GO Bonds High School, acquisition, construction, modernization, and equipping of certain improvements at district sites and facilities. Motion by vice president Irvin, and a second by trustee Mahia. Those in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously, thank you very much. So now we move on to item B5, which is a report on Equity Task Force Recommendation Increasing Teacher Diversity, and I'm going to turn the microphone to Mr. Henderson.
Good evening, Board President Brown, trustees, Dr. Noguchi, and fellow cabinet members. I appreciate the opportunity to come back and provide an update, provide this report on an Equity Task Force recommendation of increasing teacher diversity. The one that lead tonight, I have invited some backup HR, senior directors, Sarah Gill, Justin Campbell, Michelle Gutierrez, and they probably would prefer I wait till the end to announce them, but a lot of their work is reflected in the information I'll be sharing with you tonight. The purpose of the presentation is to outline the work that's been accomplished regarding this recommendation, although the focus of- this recommendation, although the focus of the Equity Task Force recommendation was on certificated staff or teachers. We will be going over some data relative to all of our employee workforce, so that we see the, the demographic shifts that are happening with our other employee groups as well. We'll identify some key findings and our next steps moving forward. This all was a result of task force recommendations from the Equity Task Force. You recall last year, I presented an update on two of the recommendations, number two, increasing teacher diversity, and number three, analyzing teacher placement. We'll be back another time for the teacher placement information, but this is focusing just on the recommendation number two, increasing our teacher diversity. These fit naturally and go with our district goals, five point O. We constantly are looking at ways to recruit, hire, train, and retain high-quality staff, and with the added emphasis on increasing diversity, and five point three, expanding our recruiting and hiring processes to increase diversity, and not just our certificated, but our classified management workforce as well. First off, I thought it pertinent to take a look at our student demographic data. I would be remiss if I didn't point out that our twenty-nine, six-hundred-and-one students this year represents an increase of seven-hundred-and-ten students over this time last year. This is pulled as of March twenty-first, and as I network with people around who are experiencing some declining enrollment, it is certainly noteworthy of all the work of the divisions that have been part of increasing our student enrollment. Seven-hundred-and-ten's a big number for us, and definitely worth applauding. Our ethnic and racial demographic breakdown of students, we're primarily Hispanic, Latino at almost seventy percent, sixty-seven, seventeen percent white, and you see the remainder of the breakdown, two or more races, Asian, Black or African-American, three percent, and others at four percent. So when we talk about our, our adult workforce, it's important just to take a snapshot and look at who the students are that we serve, and what their, their demographic breakdown is, is to put it in context. We'll start out with a, a look at all of our employees, so this looks at all employee groups, classified, certificated managers altogether. Last year, I presented a three-year trend, rather than drop the first year off and add another year to keep it a three-year trend, I just added another column, so we see the continuing trend, and it's, it's a four-year trend. So the two thousand and twenty-two column is new, and when you look at all of our employees in MCS, thirty-nine-point-six percent are Hispanic, Latino, that's up six-point-one percent. The percentage change column is a comparison from two thousand and nineteen straight to two thousand and twenty-two, just to see what the difference is. So that, along with the trend line for each year, gives me an indication of where things are, are going with our demographic makeup. Black or African-American, three-point-one percent is an increase of just over half a point, and you can see the, the representative change of both white and other populations. Breaking down just managers, so our management employee population is thirty-two percent Hispanic, Latino, that is an increase of almost seven percent. White, fifty-six-point-three percent, Black or African-American, six percent in two thousand and twenty-two, which is an increase of almost three percent, and other at five-point-three percent, almost a percentage point increase. And if I can take a pause just on some, some sort of overview data, I look back at two thousand and twenty, and of all of our MCS employees, they'd included representation of up to seventeen different race demographic categories. And when looking just at certificated employees, it reflected representation of up to eleven different race demographic categories. But the highest concentration of all of our employee groups fall into Hispanic, Latino, white, and Black or African-American, along with other, and other is maybe few individuals in each respective demographic category, specific group, but a wide variety of demographic representation. So the reporting out is focused on the biggest populations that we have among our employee groups. With the classified employees, you see similar trends, primarily Hispanic or Latino, fifty-two-point-eight percent, and Black or African-American, four-point-one percent, you see the increases from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-two. Now, the focus of the Equity Task Force was on certificated employees, our teaching staff, so that's what's represented in this slide. So twenty-five-point-three percent of our certificated staff are Hispanic or Latino, that's up just over five-and-a-half percent from two thousand and nineteen. White is sixty-six-point-three percent, decreased by six percent since that time. Black or African-American, two-point-four percent, just over half a point increase. What I'd like to do is separate just our, our new hire employees, and to look at the same year span, two thousand and nineteen to present, of just the certificated employees that we've hired in each of those years, and to give you an example, for two thousand and twenty-two, that represented one hundred and ninety-five certificated hires, not just teachers, but inclusive of counselors and, and other certificated positions. So you can see it, just this two thousand and twenty-two year, forty-one percent were Hispanic, Latino, that's almost a seventeen percent increase over what that percentage was of the new hires in two thousand and nineteen. Black or African-American, two-point-one percent, although when you take two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty-two change, you see a slight decrease of almost half a percent. I'd point out in two thousand and twenty and twenty-one, we had a higher-than-average hiring certificated employees and, and Black or African-American demographic, and you could also see an increase over that time in the category of other of just over half percent. Another way to look at the information, just taking a broader view from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty-two, the top of the chart represents just new hires from those two dates, and the bottom represents all employees, including new hires. And I just want to point out, for example, with the focus on certificated, in two thousand and sixteen of our new hires, and these are, our new hires representing diversity, so new hire employees of certificated, for example, in the middle, middle row, employees of color, thirty-two percent in two thousand and sixteen compared to two thousand and twenty-two over half, fifty-point-eight percent. And our managers showed the most dramatic change, just under twelve percent of our managers were individuals of color as compared to fifty-six percent in two thousand and twenty-two. And you can see the comparison also between those two years of all of our employees put together on the bottom portion there. Now, the, the change will be a little bit more incremental with the bottom group because it represents so many more employees, you're talking almost four thousand employees in the bottom group, as opposed to new hires, which could be a certificated, for example, one hundred and ninety-five. So some key findings that, that we've identified through looking at the data is our, our workforce continues to reflect increasing diversity across all of our employee groups, although the focus again was on teachers, we see it in pretty dramatically, and strongest trends in our leadership, our managers, both at the district and site management, as, as well as teaching, our certificated staff. We are aware that there's more work to do, if our overall workforce demographic, if the intention is to mirror more closely the demographics of our student body, when we go back and compare with that, one of those first charts. So in identifying what, what are some things we think might be contributing factors, we put a lot of energy into branding the district as a destination district, both in our media and through many different means, as well as our equity focus. Over several years, we've had a focus of our professional development on, through the epic education, and, and looking at inclusivity and equity, and, and educating folks through professional development. We've expanded our outreach and recruitment through other platforms that we haven't traditionally, expanded our use of, of platforms like LinkedIn for recruiting, and this year, we've added, we have had staff attend historically Black college and university recruitment trips in Mississippi, specifically Alcorn, don't call it Alcorn, Alcorn State, Jackson State, and we had staff just return from a trip to Washington DC Howard and Georgetown University to see and participate, and, and what might come, potential partnerships as we attend job fairs out there. Also emphasize improvement in our staffing timelines and process. Historically, the district's had reputation of not getting out to hire our positions until late April and May because of just the, the way that our staffing process was, was put into place, and with the partnership of our labor groups and negotiating some changes to that, we've been able to shrink that time down to the beginning of March. So when you have available candidates who are looking for positions, and you're able to post your positions early on in the spring, you have a higher likelihood of recruiting and securing those candidates. I would attribute some of our success to those efforts. We continue to participate in job fairs, we've expanded to virtual fairs, the pandemic kind of led us in that direction, we haven't seen as much return on virtual fairs through the California Virtual Fairs, but what we have seen return on is our MCS hosted job fairs, and we host them locally, and we put it on right out here in the parking lot, and we've done an expansion of radio advertising to expand our reach beyond our local Modesto two oh nine bubble into the Upper Stockton, some Sacramento regions, and in the Bay Area, so that has pulled some more folks out. We made investments through the board's support and compensation and working conditions in being that destination district, we knew that we were way behind in our health and welfare, welfare benefit contributions, and that's something we really worked on over the past few years, and I think it makes a difference what people are selecting a district to work for, hiring incentives, the investment in professional development, what, what investment they make toward benefits, which are important, increasingly important, I think, for young people looking to get into their first careers. And we have enjoyed through a lot of work, it didn't come by accident, a positive relationship with our, our labor partners, and when that kind of collaboration happens, I think, when given the choice between a district that has labor strife, if you watch the news, a little, little tense down in LA right now, some other districts, but we've been very fortunate to work out our differences and, and be collaborative partners. Our next step is we're, we're pouring a lot of our staff resources, the people in the room from HR, on the Hiring Workflow Improvement Project, which is well worth the time, but it's a lot of time, and by the time we're finished, we're gonna be very excited about the product, because the message of value is gonna send to every employee who gets hired through our district and goes to orientation and onboarding, is gonna feel a whole different level of importance into what we put into our new hires, just based on how they, how they feel throughout the process, what their hiring experience is, but it's a lot of time working collaboratively, collaboratively with IT and other departments to make that work. So we'll be able to turn our attention more to data dashboard developments, so we have the data at our fingertips, rather than having to do, end up data pools once a year to be more accessible. We want to keep refining and evaluating our hiring selection process to ensure fair objective, objective and equitable processes, and I think part of that is educating people and becoming familiar with the biases that can work themselves into some of those processes if you're not familiar with or aware of it. We look to expand our partnerships, most recently with Stan Slott State Partnership, Career Ready U Memorandum of Understanding, which we were able to sign, and a CTAP grant. And similar to HBCU, there are a lot of Hispanic-serving institutions defined by at least twenty-five percent of their full-time undergraduate enrollment being Hispanic, and over fifty percent being low-income, and twenty-one of California's twenty-three CSUs qualify. So, right here in California, we have the opportunity to establish connections with teacher preparation programs at these institutions, and I think that would serve us well. We also see an opportunity with the local faith-based community in getting the word out for the district about employment opportunities all across the board in our district, and we haven't leveraged that and really established that partnership. And then in terms of being more intentional, to begin, once we can redirect some of our resources to a very specific Teach Modesto initiative, targeting and building pipelines of, of teachers of color within a, our own backyard, Grow Your Own initiatives, which really, when you talk to different districts, are how they began the process of trying to increase the, the diversity, and I think a multi-pronged approach is helpful, but we, we have a lot of students, seven-hundred-and-ten more than last year, but thirty thousand students, and how many at, at secondary to plant the seeds locally will really bear fruit in the future. And one of the biggest barriers, among the biggest barriers, are financial for folks going into programs and to become a teacher, is the expense associated with it, the fact that I have to take a weekend or a part-time job and work in the evening while I student teach for free, and, and there are models out there that turn that on its head, apprenticeship and residency models, which essentially liken apprenticeships in the trades, our, our paid student teaching experiences, and that really changes the game for some folks who, because of loans, or the expense, or just the time associated with having to, to hold down a job and do those things, can really open a door of opportunity that wasn't there previously. With that, I turn it back over to you, trustee Brown.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from the public on this matter? I see Mr. Ariano.
Hi, good evening, board and, and cabinet. I'm Aaron Angiano from the Latino Community Roundtable, and I'm pleased to see that you have done some work here and, and been successful, and I still like to see more work, of course, because I see sixty-seven percent of the students are Latinos, although I heard seventy-three, so I don't know which is the right number at this point. But we've been talking about this for thirty years, since I've been living in South Modesto and, and around here, that diversity has to be increased at Modesto City Schools, and every time I talk to people, they say, we need to increase diversity, and sometimes I say, you don't forget diversity, we need to get good grades and, and less suspensions in those detention rooms, so. Anyway, I still see that the teachers, more than that, well, the teachers are white compared to Latinos, but it's still a good, a lot of hope, and, and I see good work, and I apologize, I even asked for one of you to be fired for not hiring Latino teachers, but I think that up and down the valley, we can get some teachers, including Fresno State. I've been called every, every school of education up and down the valley to see how many teachers they graduate, and Sacramento, and Sacramento State graduates ten percent of the nation's teachers, and then you have Fresno State that graduates like six or eight hundred a year, so there's, there's a good pool that we can convince them that it's cheap to live in Modesto, that we have good professional development, and, and a good place to raise a family, and good salary. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Thank you. Comments or questions from the board? I do have a question myself, let's see, vice president Irvin, you're ahead of me.
Yes, a couple things. One, I, I wanted to know, in the certificated new hires, there was a, well, I'll consider it, a significant decline, if you look at two thousand and nineteen, then you go up to five part, five percent, two thousand and twenty, four-point-nine percent in two thousand and twenty-one, and two-point-one percent in two thousand and twenty-two for hiring of African-American, Black African-American certificated new hires. Was there any, I guess, rationale about what the decline was that particular year, with competitiveness, or applicants not applying, do we, can we pinpoint where that decline originated from?
No, we haven't, we'll, we'll be looking at this in, in our management team, but we haven't identified a causation for that, that dip right there, but, you know, good, good news in the two prior years, that, that those were, were bumper years in terms of a higher percentage than we normally see, in terms of our hiring of certificated staff for African-American or Black, and so we'll, we'll try and dig deeper down to, to the specifics of employees to figure out if there was something that we could tie to, an association or, or a cause and effect there.
Okay, thank you, and the next one is, is when are we gonna get a teacher preparation CTE program? You know, if we're gonna be a destination, destination district, you know, we do, you know, we, we do education best, you know, so prepare teachers before they get to college, you know, having a CTE for teacher prep, you know, to get them, you know, along that lines, and get that, that seed going here within the district.
Yeah, the flagship program was Johansen Program, Education and Child Development Academy several years ago, you may be familiar, and, and it shifted after the recession to an education and human development program, because after the recession, a lot of layoffs, these, lack of interest, and had to kind of diversify to the human professions, and then over time, we've, we've, Rachel Barkus taught that program, and that was a pipeline into teaching, and of course, we recruited her into other roles in the district now in CTE. But we did make some changes with our, our programs that shifted a couple of teachers into CTE, child education development programs, which we do have operating now, one at Downey, and the second one, I want to say, is Modesto High School. So they are there. the second one, I want to say, is Modesto High School. So they are there, just needing, we need to push the resources and support. Those are people new to the CTE environment in terms of teaching, but the structures are there. They also have CTSOs, Career Technical Student Organizations, which are, we've talked about, you know, High School Future Teachers Club. They are the formal vocational or CTE student organizations that feed into that pipeline as well. So they exist, but certainly we need to push more attention into them.
All right. Thank you.
Great.
And great report, great report. Nice to see the data, or the data.
Trustee Masters.
Thank you. Thanks. So just a comment on the CTE program is, you know, I think many students that have worked with, that wanted to be teachers, and many teachers like myself end up becoming teachers because of a teacher before or somebody in the family. And it was a good teacher that inspired them. Or sometimes it's like, oh, man, I hated that subject. I think I can really help students in that. So sometimes I think of CTE as opportunities for kids to, like, experience things that they haven't experienced or get interested in something. And we all experience teaching in our whole lives in education. And it takes one teacher to make a connection to get other students to become teachers. But I love the idea of getting more opportunities for students to learn about becoming educators and coming back to their community in that. So that's inspiring, thinking about the future for that. My question for this is, Mr. Anguiano mentioned about the number of teachers that are coming out of our universities in California. My question is, if you can, you don't have to answer this right now, I'm sure it's going to, you're going to have to go find these data for me. But I'd like to know the breakdown in percentages of teacher credential candidates coming out of this, out of our colleges. Do those mirror the, you know, the percentages that we're looking at? Because if those teachers that are graduating our colleges are 60% white, then we're going to have trouble pulling in more Latino teachers because the percentages are that way. So I'd like to see what that percentage breakdown is and how our hiring is matching either that percentage or skewed in a different way.
We can get that for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from other board members? One question that I have, Mr. Henderson, you mentioned incentives that could be offered for bringing people to our destination district. And I see throughout the state that there are opportunities that districts are exploring of housing assistance. Have we looked into that as a draw to Modesto?
Not specifically down to concrete proposals, but we have begun to talk about it. Frankly, it's something five, 10 years ago, I wouldn't thought would have been in the realm of possibility, but it is increasingly something, as you have heard, that I've heard people talking about, a project on another district not too far, several years ago, of kind of either purchasing a block of apartments, for example, to be kind of helping with housing assistance and relocation and that sort of thing. For our folks who went to the recruitment trips, they did connect first with the Chamber of Visitors Bureau. And we need to connect more deeply with them, as well as maybe real estate agents, because one of the hardest things could be, great if we could recruit someone, maybe from out of this area to this area, but if they have difficulty finding housing, or, you know, it's going to be a detrimental effect on their motivation to come here. So we haven't looked at concrete proposals, but we have begun the conversations around that area.
Great. Yeah, coming from out of state, or, you know, we do have benefits over areas like the Bay Area or even Sacramento where rents are higher than they are here. But I can tell you from being in that industry that the availability of housing is very tight. And unless we do make specific efforts to create opportunity, the community doesn't necessarily provide it.
Agreed. Thank you.
I think that's a good thing for us to consider. All right. This is a report. Oh, Trustee Urban, I didn't see you. Go ahead, please.
Just to go back, President Brown was talking about, about the housing situation. Do you know if they still have the Teacher Next Door program? You know, that was the program where they would, they would actually pay like a down payment for a teacher to actually live in the community that they taught in. They also had the Cop Next Door program as well back in the day, but I know when I was teaching. They had the Teacher Next Door, and they would pay down payment assistance for a house, for the teacher to actually live in and around the area or in the vicinity of their, the school that they taught at. So it encourages teachers to kind of live in the community. You know, I don't know if that program still exists.
First I've heard of it, but I did make a note. We'll take a look into it. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the great report. We appreciate the progress and especially the emphasis that is being placed on making sure that we address that equitable appearance where we have our staff and our teachers look like those students that they're teaching. So thank you for all the efforts and the improvements. And like you, we're excited to see those improvements continue.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I've got a request that we take a quick break at this point. So I'm going to suggest that we take a five-minute break, and we'll return at about quarter All right, reconvening. We're moving now to Item B6, which is a report on proposed revisions to the 2023-24 Conduct and Dress Code. And that's Fallon Ferris and Dave Houck.
Good evening. Good evening, Board President Brown, Board Trustees, Superintendent Noguchi, Cabinet Members and Guests. My name is David Houck. I'm Senior Director of Child Welfare and Attendance. And joining me this evening is Ms. Fallon Ferris, Modesto City Schools' Equity and Intervention Specialist. Tonight, we'll be presenting on proposed revisions to the 2023-2024 Conduct and Dress Code. The purpose of this presentation is to provide the Board of Trustees with a report on proposed revisions to the MCS Conduct Code, which include 712 athletic probation policy and the Modesto City Schools Dress Code. This presentation most aligns with Goal 3, providing a safe, welcoming, and respectful learning environment for every member of the school community, while ensuring effective district-wide communication for students, staff, families, and community partners. At the November 21, 2022 Board Meeting, you approved the proposed changes to the MCS Athletic Probationary Policy. With the creation of more athletic programs in grades 7, 8, we felt it was necessary to include junior high students in these changes. This proposal simply aligns 7, 8 with 912 for consistency. Proposed changes to the Dress Code portion of the Conduct Code are a result of many contributing factors. There's been a growing student and staff frustration with the Dress Code. Planned student walkouts and protests were averted when students were told they would be provided an opportunity to have input in the creation of a new Dress Code. First and foremost, the Dress Code must maintain the safety of the school campus. Our current Dress Code is based on what might be considered a distraction rather than something that is truly a disruption to the learning environment. Another concern is that students should not fear unnecessary discipline or body shaming. The Dress Code should be enforced with a focus on honoring instructional time. School community should respect and understand student desires to express themselves while done so appropriately. Another reason to ensure equity, another reason is to ensure equity and expectations. This Dress Code should not be focused on one particular group of students. Equity by race and ethnicity, gender, religion, and many other factors should be used when creating a Dress Code. We realized that in order to get the voice of many heard, we had to gather input from a number of educational partners. We began by holding student forums, one at Modesto High School and one at Davis High School. We took the existing Dress Code to the Student Advisory Council to gather input and student voice. We also recognized we needed input from students, staff, and parents. And as a result, we conducted surveys that were sent out to all students in grades 5 through 12, certificate, certificated, and classified staff, as well as our families. In the fall of 2022 and 2023, Fallon Ferris and I began the task of assembling a District Dress Code Committee. This group was designed to provide a voice for all educational partners. This group consisted of certificated teachers, schoolsite administrators, community members, Modesto Teachers Association representatives, and district office staff. We met three times this school year, once in December, once in January, and once in March. This slide includes the members of the Dress Code Committee. A special thanks to all who devoted their time to this important committee. Next, you will be hearing from Ms. Fallon Ferris, Modesto City Schools Equity and Intervention Specialist.
I'm not quite as tall, but as Mr. Houck shared, gathering input was vital. We sent out surveys to our students, parents, and staff. And in total, we received almost 6,000 respondents from students, had about 700 respondents from parents. And then from surveying our staff, we received a little more than 1,600 responses. Each survey asked three statements regarding potential changes that may be deemed as more significant in relation to our current Dress Code. As you will see on the following slides, side by side, we show student, parent, and staff feedback on the same statements. We dive further into whether they strongly agreed, agreed, disagree, or strongly disagree with the above statement. The first statement is regarding appropriate hats being allowed on campus and in the classroom. Here you see that about 90% of our students agreed or strongly agreed with this statement, about half of our parents agreed or strongly agreed, and then just under 50% of our teachers agreed. agreed with this statement. The second statement was, should students be able to show bare abdomen, midriff? Here, we have about 75% of our students agreeing, parents at about 19% agreeing with this statement, and then staff at about 17%. Our third statement was whether clothing must be secured and cover personal body parts. Here you see that 70% of our students agreed with this statement, 90% of our parents agreed, and then about 95% of our teachers agreed with this statement. The proposed Dress Code we are presenting for you to review is not something we have taken lightly. We made every effort possible to provide an opportunity for all educational partners to have a voice. We completed a thorough review of Dress Codes from nearby school districts. We reviewed applicable law and reviewed current recommendations from the ACLU. And we understand that we cannot satisfy everyone, but it is our goal and we believe we have created a document that meets the need of our community. In your materials, you will have the proposed Dress Code that was recommended by the Dress Code Committee. The Dress Code we are proposing contains several significant updates. A couple of those are allowing students to wear non-gang related hats and head coverings while on campus and in the classroom, allowing students to wear hoods on campus and in the classroom. This suggested change is intended to support our most sensitive learners who find comfort and security while wearing a hood, but also keeping in mind that earbuds, with the exception of those specifically prescribed by a physician or as part of an IEP, are still banned during instructional time. And you will see this called out on the Dress Code Draft that you have in front of you as well. Also, staff may ask students to temporarily remove head coverings to ensure compliance with not having earbuds during instructional time. Another update would be permitting bare midriff shirts. All shirts must include straps or sleeves and may not expose undergarments or private areas. The proposed Dress Code could also ha, also has number of, a number of similarities to our current Dress Code policy. The Dress Code forbids gang attire, inappropriate clothing, visible undergarments, prohibits anything that is see-through as well. It also allows a site to make site-specific safety modifications to their Dress Code with approval from the Senior Director of Child Welfare and Attendants and Modesto Police Department.
Thank you. I appreciate your time and attention this evening and look forward to your valuable feedback. Once we have received your input, we will submit a finalized Dress Code at the May 15, 2023 Board Meeting for your approval. This will be included in Modesto City Schools Parent Handbook and Conduct Code for the 2023-2024 School Year. We will work with the Communications Office and Site Administration to make certain staff, students and parents are aware of these changes. Thank you for your time, and now I would like to open for questions, and we may, we will also receive questions with public for comment.
All right, do we have any comments from the public on this agenda item?
Mayor Noguiano again. What was it about the police department? I just, can you explain that, please?
Thank you. Yeah, one of the reasons we would like to include the police department is specifically for identifying potential gang issues and to make certain that when we address those issues, we're up to date with current trends within the community.
Good evening. In that Dress Code, it also says that elementary students cannot wear shoes with the back out. And I have real concerns about that because a lot of our kids do wear shoes that have the back out. They have not been a problem. And the high school and junior high will be allowed to wear backs out. So I think we need to have equity across the board. And if junior high and high school students are allowed to wear shoes with no back, then I think our elementary students should be allowed to wear them. It hasn't been a problem. I would also like to know how are you going to handle, you have this rule that they can't, boys can't sag, and that's an ongoing issue. I mean, one of those battles that I don't even try to fight. I tell them to pull their pants up. If they pull them up, fine. If they don't, I'm not going to make a big deal about it. And so I think that's one of those issues where kids know there's no consequences if they do it or don't do it, so they're going to do it. So it's kind of fruitless.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your input. As far as the elementary student.
Just one minor sort. As a teacher, my only, and I agree actually with, you know, most of these things that we don't want to spend a lot of, too much energy disciplining kids over clothing, but we do want to make sure that gang attire and things like that aren't, you know, decreasing safety. The one thing I would just have, and I don't have a problem with hoods in general, but as a teacher, the one thing that does happen sometimes, and I don't know if the verbiage could be tweaked, but there are some students who will literally like pull the hood completely and then cinch it up to where, you know, and so I just think, you know, maybe if it could be, the language could be tweaked to where, you know, the face, I need to, as a teacher, just do, it's fine if you're, if this is covered, but I want to be able to make eye contact with you and I want to be able to see that you're engaged with instruction, you know, because it does happen when you're being somewhat lenient about it, and sometimes I am, and within the confines of my classroom, and I have to say, come on, let me see your face, you know, and kinds of things. So, because I individually as a teacher, you know, will allow, because there are students who, based on comfort, or they're having a really bad hair day or whatever, really want to have that hood up. And so I don't, you know, I choose not to invoke that, but that is one thing that does come up, you know, to where they'll want to just sort of cinch it all the way up to where their nose is sticking out.
All right. Do we have comments or questions from the Board? Looks like first up is Vice President Urban.
Yes, 20 years in the making. So my first question is, you know, I was looking at the, the, on the Dress Code data, clothing must be secured and covered by body, cover body, personal body, or cover personal body parts. And I see that there's, you know, almost evenly across the board, but strongly agree, agree and disagree, which kind of led me to, to think that maybe students didn't understand that question, or, you know, are they, maybe they didn't understand when they said must be secured. Can you elaborate what, what's secured, must be secured?
So one of the current trends that you're seeing out there would be a shirt with, sorry, I have a big voice and so I just automatically assume everybody can hear me.
Yeah, I do the same thing.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Urban. So one of the concerns that we specifically wrote that for is a lot of students will wear a shirt that has a very, very large cutout in the side, which would expose private areas, right? Or pants that are so cut or torn so high up that they also may do those things. So it's specifically made to address those.
Because I was saying that we need to make sure students understand what that actually, actually means, you know, in terms of the practicality of it. Because they'll say, you know, it's secured, it's on my body, you know? And then, oh, in terms of enforcing, as Ms. Williams was saying about the sagging, you know, which shows the underwear, usually when they, when they sag. How do we consistently enforce that to a point where we, we get adherence to that, that particular requirement?
So at the beginning of every year, I'm given the opportunity to speak to administrators. That would be a topic of that conversation. What we wanted to stay away from was, as an example, one of our neighboring districts, theirs is pants may not be two inches larger. I really didn't want to get into semantics of breaking out a tape measure and measuring. I thought we could use good judgment, and that's what I will, when we have, when we have administrator training next year, the statement will be, use good judgment. If it's excessively large and something that may cause a safety type issue or excessive undergarments showing, then they would address it.
Okay. Or we can just hang a bunch of bungee cords in the discipline office and.
Suspenders will be passed out.
Thank you, and thank you for the work that went into, you know, gathering this data and including the community, the students and staff. And this really, this really helps, you know, helps with that. Thank you.
Trustee Daley.
So I have a few comments and a couple of questions, I think. I find it interesting that the proposed Dress Code adds the hats and the hoods on campus and in class when parents and staff on both are kind of split 50/50. I could see doing it maybe on campus, but not in class. There was something suggested about the possibility of coping. We need to teach our children other opportunities for coping rather than to hide. So that's a real issue that I have as a therapist for mental health purposes. That is not a, that's a maladaptive coping skill, and to encourage that, I have, I have issue with that. The other thing that we're meant to do is to help teach kids what they're supposed to be doing and how they're supposed to be dressing and teaching them how to respect themselves. And, you know, respect is one of our standards, so that goes to themselves as well. So there's that issue that I have about some of those things in reference to in class, not necessarily on campus. So I get that. So then, my final question really is associated to the gang attire and then talking about that the site still maintains the ability to create site-based modifications based on CWA and MPD. I would rather see it across the board, that it's going to be the standard based on MPD and what is trending at that point for the gangs, rather than having the sites have the opportunity to say, well, at this school, it's okay, but at this school, it's not.
But if I work, is there a, if I work backwards on that? Okay, so it's, the site-specific Dress Code has always been a site policy that they have had that, we're not asking to change that. That's always been with, within their rules and regulations. They have to convene their safety committee. If they're having a specific issue, they would convene their safety committee. It would go to their site council, and then the parents have two weeks' notice before that is implemented. So that's, it's not really a change. It is current policy. As far as the, the hoods, one of the thoughts, and I understand your statement about the maladaptive behavior, one of the thoughts is that oftentimes when we see the child wearing the hood, it may be as, as simple as a bad hair day. And so giving them that right of protection with, without having to quote unquote climb the ladder in a student discipline issue in the classroom for a kid that's really, doesn't want to stand up and say, you know what, I got a really bad haircut, or I, it's really humid outside today and my hair is really crazy, to try to give those students some protection within those type of situations. I'm sorry, there was another question I don't recall.
No, that was really it.
Okay.
Just those.
Thank you, I appreciate your input.
Trustee Masters.
Yeah, on the, on the survey, great job, by the way, there's a lot, like, that's a lot of data to take from and then have to sift through.
Fallon did it all.
Yeah. Were there any qualitative statements involved in this? They're just not on this. I'm sure that, 1,000, what was that? 5,989 respondents, you had quite a bit to go through then if there are qualitative statements. Because my question was, with many of these, but for some of them, the, there was like a why and why not? You see a very big, like, the biggest difference here was the midriff, the midriff issue here where you had 74% of students agree and only 19 and 17% on the other two. And so the question for me is, why? Like, why, why, why do you agree with this so much on the student end? Because, because we need to have, parents and staff need to hear that, right? Because there's also a reason why not. And I think that if both, both area, both partners had an opportunity to listen to one another or hear why, there might be some understanding on why, why we would change the, the code. So that was, that was one question. I don't know if you want to comment on that.
Yeah, so I would say there's a lot of qualitative data from each of them, from students. I think that was more so what we had taken in in the beginning with the student forums was multiple students had stated, if you, and I did, because they said, if you actually go to a junior's section in JCPenney's, Macy's, anywhere, you cannot find like much of anything that doesn't have a little bit of midriff showing nowadays. It's like, it's kind of like, and I did go into the shops, and that's kind of what you see as the trend of style and fashion these days, unless it's a regular t-shirt. And so with that, we had kind of listened to some of the students, but we also, the final draft did come from the committee, and that was them taking in all the qualitative data from all the parents, student input as well as staff, as to the reasons behind kind of why they were putting their suggestions that way or disagreed or agreed with it. And so that was the final recommendation after all the qualitative data was taken in.
Yeah, it's, is ridiculous trying to find clothes for teenagers. I'm, I might, I mean, I have a teenage son and the kid has like flamingo legs and to find, it's just ridiculous that, and that's, boys' clothing is usually easier to deal with than, than women's and girls' clothing.
And there was one more piece. I'll let Houck kind of talk towards it when it comes to the different like sizes and sometimes how that caused some issues on campuses as well.
Yeah.
So one of the concerns brought forth by students and staff, number one, staff, some felt uncomfortable addressing it just on such a frequent basis. But number two was, was fairness in application, and I believe Mr. Urban had asked that question earlier, where actually students that are maybe a little larger or, or a little thinner or maybe singled out more for a certain type of dress, as far as the bare midriff. And at one of our comprehensive sites, we have some male students wearing bare, bare midriff shirts, which was not addressed at all, yet the female students were still addressed. We wanted to be sure it was fair and equitable for all.
Okay. And the last thing I have to say, I just want to thank you for saying one statement that you made that really puts it in perspective, being a distraction and not a disruption. And there's a clear difference when we're talking about a disruption in class, that makes it hard to teach. And a distraction is something different. So I thank you for that statement. That's it.
Trustee Marks.
Thank you. My second round going through this, so it's kind of fun just to see the difference. Question, I wanted to know how we're planning to enforce these, because I actually talked to some staff when we did this before to find out how we did this before. So how do we plan to enforce the regulations in the code?
So my hope is that it's addressed prior to the day starting, when administration, when campus supervisors are out and about in their mornings greeting students as they're coming onto campus, my hope is that it is addressed then. But also with the removal of some of this, of the, some of the things that set more sexualized students or are more arbitrary, that staff in the classroom will feel more comfortable when addressing it at that point, if that makes sense. So start, first, first line of defense, site administrators, campus supervisors. Second line, classroom teachers.
Okay. Only because I get the most complaints from students saying, this isn't enforced, very frustrated, and then parents saying, my child leaves the house looking like they're supposed to, but I come to school and they are not dressed like they were supposed to be dressed. And no one even does anything about it. So the parent is upset. And so just, those are the comments that I get. And so I just wanted to ensure that we are, when we say these are the rules, this is how we enforce them, and this is the consequences. There's a lot of different ideas out there on how to enforce these. They have them wear a big, long shirt that says, hey, you wore the wrong thing today, you know? And they know, the kids already know, I broke the rule and I'm, so now I have to do the consequences of it, just like at SAR, we will come to school with you and sit with you all day. And the students go, I don't want that to happen. So it helps them to say, if this really does happen, then whatever the consequences are, whatever we determine as a site administration, the consequences. So the other thing that I found that was very interesting was that in ensuring that it's a safe campus for everybody, that it was easier for the administrators that are going to enforce this to have simple rules. These are our simple rules. This is what you can not wear. That was the, that's what the last time we did this, was to go through the what you cannot wear, because that helped define, and that's why we. cannot wear, because that helped define, and that's why we did the picture, no cleavage, no butt cracks, no sagging, no, we did all of that in like six pictures, and no, you know, showing mid, you know, showing midriff, we did all that, and that couldn't do that. So all of that was helpful because it gave us the opportunity to, the staff to know what is acceptable and what's not acceptable behavior or attire at the school site. Because if I'm a staff member and I have to enforce this, that's really tough, because you got, let's say you have 3,000 kids on a campus, which Modesto High used to be that big, let's say 20, 2, 200, and I have 100 kids not doing what they're supposed to be doing, it's hard to enforce that. But if you start doing it and systematically do it, like you said, start at the beginning of the year, but it has to be enforced. So that's my only concern about that. So then the other comment that I had was, of course, we got an email from a staff member in elementary school that was concerned about the hats in class, like, why in class? I hear you, I could understand that. I did have Pastor Crosby, he commented, he said, he's the chief communication officer with the Modesto Police Department Clergy Council. And so he said, I do not support the wearing of hats or hoodies inside of classrooms regardless of instruction. We must be mindful that requiring standard behavior and disposition will help students in their presentations in other venues outside of the educational institution. This is yet another reason why standard behavior and presentation must be initiated at home. And then he wanted that same thing that you talked about, a dialogue between the parents and the students to actually understand why, why, why the disparity between the two on what this requirement is. So, and then I have not talked to one person, I'm sure it's probably mostly students, that wanted midriff to be shown, as it showed in the, the survey, but no one, no parents, no staff wanted midriff. How do you measure how much midriff? Is it an inch above your belly button? Is it four inches above your belly button? Is it two inches below? How do you enforce this? So those are other questions that came up. And so I just think making it, and it's also, to me, disrespectful to women, even though the, the industry, the clothing industry, isn't protecting our children, we are. This is our responsibility. And I want students to be able to pay attention in class, to not be distracted, or, you know, figuring out how you're going to get under that, because now it's not attached to anything. So just trying to figure out, how can we protect our, our girls that are vulnerable? And we have a lot of girls in our schools right now that are trafficked. So saying it's okay to do these things, I don't think is, is helpful for them, or the, the young men that have to pay attention in class. So those are some of my concerns about it, and the communities, you know, they've been contacting me about this too, and have concerns. And so I, it's, it is hard, and when, anytime we're doing this, it's really difficult. Now, the interesting thing to me is tonight, hardly anybody is here, and we had a room full of students last time we did this, they were irate because we were putting restrictions on shorts and shirts and whatever, and we were saying, these are what you can and can't do. So even though that happened, they, when we finally put it together, they were happy with it, because it actually protects them. So that's our goal, is to protect them. So I think, to me, that's, so I shared my heart, I shared my concerns, I shared community concerns, and so those are things that I would just like to see modified for this.
Thank you.
Student Representative Patel.
I just want to say thank you for creating this committee and new dress code to not only make students feel more inclusive, but also put them on a fair ground, especially because we're not in the same era that we were decades ago. We live in a different era where teenagers are different. We have phones, we have technology, things spread across the world more quickly because of technology. And I think because of that being, like, the inclusion of the dress code, including these things is important to make students feel more comfortable and safe at school. So I just want to thank you for that. But aside from that, with the changes that are proposed in the new dress code, I had a question, maybe don't have the data right now, but with hats, hoods, and bare midriffs, as we see that as an increasing trend on campuses, like, is there significant discipline being done? And if there isn't, then would that necessarily coincide with staff and administrators and their discipline rates? Because if it isn't, then I don't see how it might be as big of a problem as it might seem to be.
Currently in my sidewalks, I am not seeing an across-the-board enforcement, particularly at the junior high and high school level with, with those things that you just brought up.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Trustee Daley.
I just wanted to make a quick note in reference to the technology and how do you get it out? Johansson does a really great job at doing videos, you can do the do's and don'ts of the dress code.
All right, I had a couple of questions. Can you explain to me what the, the back-out shoes are?
So I, I would think that's probably in reference to either flip-flops or Crocs. Go back.
Okay, and so one thing that I appreciate is the inclusion of student voice in this process. And I think that that speaks very highly to the difference between this meeting and the one several years ago. You know, I look at the issues that we're dealing with, and I remember dress code issues when I was a student. That was things like, you can't come to school with your shirt untucked, or you have to wear a belt with every pair of pants. And times, boy, have they changed. And, you know, if we could just enforce the belt issue again, then we wouldn't have a sagging problem. But one thing that I would like to suggest is that as we look at all of the challenges with enforcement, that once again, we go back to student voice. Let's have the students come up with how we address enforcing issues that are a problem, get their suggestions and their buy-in on how we address it. It's going to be a lot more effective if it comes from their input rather than ours or all the adults on campus. One thing about hats and hoods, we stress the importance of being, of teaching our students to be career-ready. I don't think they will find career opportunities that will allow them to wear hats and hoods in, in the work settings. So I want us to just look at that carefully and see, I've heard some other issues about hats and hoods. Let's make sure that we're teaching students to be respectful in the community and ready for future opportunities. Now, maybe on a college campus, they will, if we're teaching them to be career and college-ready, they may get away with it in college, but they won't in a career. So I think that it's okay for us to teach those principles and have our expectations allow for some variance, but let's not focus on making what's allowed become the norm. Any other comments from board members? Thank you very much for this presentation, and thank you for all the hard work. All right, our next item is B7, Approval of Graduation Requirement Recommendations. And we're going to turn the microphone to Mr. Rich.
Thank you, Board President Brown, trustees, superintendent. As a result of one of the Equity and Social Justice Task Force recommendations, which was to analyze grading policies and course offerings, Modesto City Schools convened a committee of educational partners this past August. The purpose of the graduation committee was to analyze graduation requirements and draft recommendations for the superintendent that would then be taken to the Board of Trustees. Central to this analysis was to ensure that recommendations that would be brought forward took into account equitable access for all students. Tonight, this presentation will review the work of that committee, as well as seek approval for graduation requirement changes. And just to note, that any approved changes will take effect starting with the entering freshman class of 2024, not next year. For the public benefit, I will provide a brief review of the presentation from the March 3 board report. So the purpose of the presentation, review the members' purpose and work of the committee, review our current graduation requirements, as well as the state requirements, and then outline the, what we're seeking for approval for the change in the graduation requirements, as well as the work that will have to come after that. There, there's still a significant amount of work to take care of there. This most closely aligns with Goal 1, to increase academic achievement and ensure equitable access to enable all students to attain college and career readiness, as well as, as noted before, the Equity and Social Justice recommendation to analyze grading policies and course offerings. Again, I'm just stating this just so it's overt, the changes would not take effect until the entering freshman class of 24-25. So pivotal to this work was the passing of AB 101, in which California added its first graduation requirement since 1983. Each student must complete a minimum of a semester-long course in ethnic studies, starting with the graduating class of 2930. But the law also stipulates, excuse me, that the course must be made available starting no later than 25-26. Reasons for the committee included the, to take into account the AB 101 ethnic studies requirement, as well as identifying areas of support for all learners, excuse me, and examining those requirements through the lens, an equity lens, as well as identifying ways to address the public and the board inquiries regarding the financial literacy, college readiness that we've, we've heard quite a bit about over the last several years. Again, as a reminder, for, for those that were, for the, the report that was provided in March, we're going to review the, the committee, and we'll do the same thing here, review the current requirements for the state, for what we call A through G requirements, that's for the UCCSU system, and, as well as the MCS requirements. We'll also look at some surrounding districts and light districts of our size, and then identify what needs to be addressed, and then we'll, we'll recommend those, those changes. So just a huge shout-out to all the members who participated in this work. The committee was made up, and we met, Dara was, was a key member of that committee, I don't know, we probably met probably monthly for, since August, and, and really did a lot of hard work. Really grateful for everyone who participated. Committee included those that looked at, for, a lens for all students, particularly for EL learners, for students who receive special education services, as well as parents. We had multiple parents on there as well, Dara being our student rep. So let's look at state graduation requirements. Again, this is for the, the benefit of the public, we did review this in March. You can see that the state minimum requirements is only 130 units. The VAPA, CTE, and World Language requirements have an asterisk, you're going to see this consistent throughout the recommendations. This denotes that only 10 units are required for graduation out of the three areas, not 10 in each area, a combination of 10 among the three of those. And you'll see this again. And you'll also notice that even between the California minimum requirements and the UCCSU, there are some differences in the core areas, as well as electives and PE. When we look at our current graduation requirements, again, you see the asterisk, and again, just a reminder, that denotes 10 units in one of those three areas. But you can see four years of English, three years of math, three years of history, social science, two years of science, and then VAPA, CTE, World Language, 20 units of PE. Those are all represented in what we just saw earlier. Then you'll also notice several areas where we have a requirement that are not at the state or UC level, and that would be five units in health, five units in practical arts, and five units in world geography religions. When we compare it to districts, I know it's kind of hard to see on the screen, hopefully somebody have a hard copy with you, this is a comparison of some local districts in the, in the county, as well as districts that are similar in size to us. The first three columns are the requirements we just reviewed in the other slides, just for the comparison's sake. And then just to highlight some of the differences, you'll see some things in red, that doesn't necessarily mean they're bad, we're just trying to highlight, use a different color to, to highlight some differences. So you'll notice, for example, both Turlock and Series require the state minimum of two years in math, where Elk Grove, Twin Rivers, Saks City, and Merced require less overall credits than our current MCS requirements. The committee reviewed this data, and then, and they really used it to look at possible options for our students. So the recommendation that we're seeking for approval tonight maintains the current MCS graduation requirements in the following areas. So no changes to these areas. Four years of English, three years of math, three years of history, social science, two years of science, a combination of 10 units, or, or one year of VAPA, CTE, World Language, as well as a state minimum requirement of, of two years of physical education. The recommendation for approval tonight does recommend the following changes. Adding content to our one semester health course to include college and career readiness, including personal finance, we'll talk a little bit about that here in a second, and four-year planning. That course is traditionally taken at the freshman level, and we feel that, that four-year planning would be, that's a really good spot to get them early to be thinking about that. The health content would have to be adjusted, but it would still meet the California Healthy Youth Act, which is our requirement for the content for, for that subject matter. Removing altogether the one semester of practical art requirement. That is a little bit of a legacy requirement based on a course, computer literacy used to fill that course. All courses that currently fill a practical art course can easily be moved to the elective column, or the science column, if some of them are CTE, computer science classes. We would shift the, the World Geography and Religions class to an elective, still maintain the course, shift it to an elective, and then place the ethnic studies, the new graduation from AB 101 ethnic studies course to a required course for a one semester class. And then finally, we would reduce the current number of electives from 65 to 60, bringing the total number of units from 230 to 220. This reduction in total credits needed will support all learners, especially those who need to take courses based on their IEP or Designated English Learner Services. So I'd like to go over some other recommendations based on feedback from the board meeting that we had in early March. So we're going to talk about these three areas, the movement of world geography religions, deeper dive into ethnic studies, as well as a personal finance course. Those were some, some areas that you brought last time we met. So the World Geography Religions course will remain an option on the student ballot as an elective. And as stated before, the ethnic studies course creation, which can be based on local community, as well as some state framework that we need to address, we would work to incorporate the appropriate content from world religions into that ethnic studies course. In terms of a deeper dive into ethnic studies, that was a conversation that was brought that one semester might not just be enough, that's really an introductory course, that was, that's correct. And we've reached out to the MJC Ethnic Studies Professor, Dr. Teresa Rojas, as part of the course creation. She's agreed to be part of our, our committee, our guidance committee for ethnic studies, as well as working with us to build a dual enrollment option for the next level, kind of the, if you want to think of it as a 201 class, right? So an MJC class that our students can take for a deeper dive into the ethnic studies The board also had quite a bit of conversation around the personal finance. And so there is a current proposed law in, before the, the California Senate right now, AB 984. It is just proposed, nothing is passed, in regards to personal finance. Currently, the way the proposal is written is that it would add the completion of a one semester course in personal finance to the graduation requirements in the 28, 29 school year. It would require school districts to have a full-year course in personal finance, so again, a, a longer course. Now, we currently do offer that, we offer a financial math class that, that might fit that. And this bill would require MCS to offer a personal finance course starting in the 25, 26 school year. So we are really watching this bill, nothing has happened here. We hesitate to make any recommendation for a personal finance class, again, based on your comments from last time, because of this bill. We kind of want to let this work itself out, find out what the resolution will be before we move forward with any sort of graduation requirement, because we feel like this might affect that outcome. So really, our next steps is to work with, with our partners and create the ethnic studies curriculum. We're using the CDE toolkit for, for that adoption, that, which would include a pilot and public preview, just like every other piece of curriculum that we, that we, that we adopt. Work with our labor partners, begin to really address the board policies, teaching assignments, curricula, that would, that will take some time, as well as reviewing other graduation plans. other graduation plans. An Elliott graduation plan, the EL graduation, we would have to address those to mirror this appropriately. And then a lot of work with our communications team to bring this change to all of our education partners. So what we're seeking tonight is the, the approval for the following. Removal of the practical arts graduation requirement, the adding of ethnic studies in the graduation requirement, where we're moving world geography religions to an elective course, decrease the elective credits needed from 65 to 60, decrease the credits needed for graduation from 230 to 220, which is a consequence of the two above, right? Of eliminating practical arts and the eliminating of five units of electives. And then we'll continue to work with MJC for an ethnic studies dual enrollment course, and then add a personal finance course based on the outcome of the proposed legislation. I, I thank you for your time, and I'm open to comments.
Do we have any comments from the public on this agenda item? Saying none? Comments or questions from the board members? Trustee Maestas.
The world geography and religions course is currently taught in the ninth grade?
That's correct.
As an elective, does this now allow it to be taken by nine through 12th grades?
It, it's always been available to take it by, by all grade levels. Traditionally, it's taught at the, or taken at the ninth grade level, because it helps fulfill the health requirement. But if a student, let's say a student moved into our district and they were a 10th grader, because it's a graduation requirement, they would still need to take that. But yes, it would be available to all students to take.
Trustee Marks?
No worries. I thought, I lost it. I thought it was gone. I wanted to see if it's possible to title the ethnic studies, ethnic studies and world religions, so that it doesn't get lost. I'm still concerned that it's going to get lost. Let's just say world religions becomes a course that nobody wants to take, and then it's gone. And so it's just going to be tagged on, and it'll be, it won't be there anymore. So my concern is that, and so that's why I bring it up. And I know a lot of people came and spoke at the last board meeting in support of keeping world religions. I didn't hear them say it was good to have it an elective, as an elective. I like the idea of having it as an elective, but I wanted to see it, because I see ethnic studies and religions so combined together. There's so much together with it. So I just wanted to see if the board would be amiable to having it called those two, and then having it together, because we're eliminating 20 units, which is two, two full year classes of units.
We, we are not proposing the elimination of 20 units. We are, we are proposing elimination of 10 units.
Oh, 10. 10, that's right. Okay, I saw 20, and I was thinking it was 20 units. You're right. Okay, I get it. It was one year. I understood that at the last meeting when we talked about this. So I don't know if the board would be amiable towards that, but I would really like to see the world religions portion still kept as part of our district and not as an elective, because I feel like the, the, all of that gets lost. But I don't know. You may not feel that way.
I think we need to take a look at what the state's requiring, because this is a state requirement. So you're, I don't know that you can rename a state requirement. That I don't know, but that would be something that the board would have to vote on as far as changing that. Again, I don't know what, legally, if we can do that, because it's a state requirement.
So at the last meeting, I brought this up, and Mr. Rich said that it should be okay to change the title of it. But unless you did some more research...
I don't, I don't remember talking about the title specifically, so I apologize. We did talk about the content, right? The content can be built around local communities. That's the objective of that.
Oh, right. Yes, I know that. I could see if I could find it, but I do recall that. But I was hopeful that we could continue on with that being part of a required course. So anyway, it's, I just think it was, it's been extremely beneficial. It brought a lot of empathy, understanding, and knowledge into other cultures, and especially when we've had some very difficult times in our community. The students had, our students actually had a better understanding of what was going on than some people outside of our district because of the teaching in world religions. So I thought that it was extremely helpful, but that was my thought.
Thank you. Vice President Irvin.
Yes, I mean, we, in, in getting that, to that point with ethnic studies, and to get sort of what trustee Marks is saying about, you know, we had a lot of people come up and, you know, present. And one of the things we've been really good about getting is what are the students saying? What are the students saying about, you know, this course in terms of its, its popularity and, and things like this? Because I believe it should be, you know, have some integration into, to ethnics, you know, ethnic studies. I don't know if changing the name would, you know, be it, but if we know that, you know, world religions are incorporated into ethnic study, to me, I think would, would suffice. But I still would like to know or see, what are, what are students saying? What are students saying? You know, it's like, we know what they're saying about the dress code and other things that we're getting, getting their attention on. And I don't want to get into a point of picking intrusion, which, things they have input on. I like to see them have input in everything. You know, Ms. Patel is, her valuable knowledge and experience is insightful and helpful. And so having student input in all of that we do as a board is important. And I know that that's, her role is not a figure role. It's a participatory, active role. So we would like to, you know, I would like to see, you know, hey, what are, what are students saying about that particular incorporation, possible incorporation, or how would they like to see it developed? Oh, and then my next question was the dual enrollment. So is that going to be the 102? The ethnic studies?
Yeah.
Whatever.
We'll have to work with MJC as, as we develop that, yeah.
Right. And so that'd be the one, so the 101 or 201, whatever it is, they'll get the, the academic, you know, high school credit for that one. But then the, the second one, they'll get the, the college credit.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice President Irvin, you just introduced our next speaker, student representative, Patel.
Yeah, just two things. One question from Mr. Rich. For the recommendation for approval, is that, does that still include the, the health, college, career, and personal finance courses? Is that part of it as well?
Yes, yeah. So we're not, we're not necessarily changing a requirement there, but we would work with the content of that.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So that would be like the semester-long period?
Correct. Which we currently offer that class. We would work to build in content for four-year planning into the health class.
Okay, sounds good. And then just a comment about the ethnic studies. I remember I was talking in our, a couple of our committee meetings with Ms. McIntyre about incorporating world religions and ethnic studies together. And I do recall she said that there was a conflict between that, because the material for ethnic studies and world religions is different, so that the world religions would need the entire semester, and so would the ethnic studies. So that's why there's the conflict with the two of those. Just clarifying that, why we, why she said that it would be difficult to merge the two courses together.
Trustee here.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for the work, and I think it's going to help a lot of our students, you know, graduate. I think that, that, that's our goal. And secondly, I, like I said, I'm a, a minor in ethnic studies, and I do think, I do think I'm kind of following the same line. I do think it needs a divided one course, because it does not give it the amount of time it needs. Honestly, I mean, if you, if you look and dive into, and we don't have enough information. We don't provide students with enough background. Students still struggle to this day to see themselves in, in, in roles, and, and, and history books, and in day-to-day stuff. So I just think, we have, just to cover, like I mentioned it before, we have like Asian-American studies, African-American studies, and, and Chicano studies and stuff. Just with that alone, like if you just cover those three major ethnicities or races, it, it just, it's just not enough time. And, and, and to, to take it away, I think, I, I agree, world religion should be a standalone course, and ethnic studies should be a standalone course, just to give it the, what it needs in the vision. Because this wasn't talked about like two years ago. I mean, this, when I was a college student, it was like a dream that one day this would be, will come into fruition and, and, and be a course in the high school. So, so yeah, I, I totally support the world religions to be a standalone course. But I also think if you want, if you, if we're going to do justice, including partners, including folks that, that have spent all their lives working for, to bring in this to the forefront of our students, with 67% of our students showing that, I think it, it should be a standalone course, with the richness that it really is required for us to make the impact in those students. At least, that's my, my thoughts.
Trustee Daly.
I agree with trustee Marks. I don't want to see that religions of the world course go away. We are representing the community, and there was a strong voice from the community that they did not want to see that go away, as well as I had the opportunity to review the media that was included in one of the emails, and that was a significant course. With having a large Sikh population, a large Muslim population, a large Assyrian Christian population, a pretty predominant Jewish population, I think in Stanislaus County at least, the religions of the world course is really important.
But just, just to be clear, we are not eliminating that course. It's moving to an elective, is what the proposal is.
So one comment on that. I really like the fact that we're cooperating with MJC to have dual enrollment with the ethnic studies. I'm wondering if we couldn't find that same connection to enhance the quality of the world religions course by creating a dual enrollment opportunity to, for students to gain college credit for that as well.
That's something we could look into.
All right. Did you have something else, trustee Marks?
I just was going to make a comment, just based on this. I appreciate the fact that world religions would be a, an elective. I just don't feel that it's going to be valued as much as it is as a required course, and... I'm sorry? It just makes me sad to think of losing such a valuable course that all students had to take, and now they won't. And they won't have the richness of that understanding of all of the cultures that live in our area, other than ethnic studies. But I believe that incorporating the religious background is extremely important to those. So I won't support this tonight. Just because of that. It's hard, because it was such a contentious thing when we incorporated it into our schools. It almost feels like I'm losing part of our whole generation of students that went through this, and now the next generation won't have an opportu, they'll have an opportunity, but they won't choose to take it. That's my concern. And because it was required, they did learn things that they wouldn't have learned if they had had to choose it. And so that's my biggest sadness about this. We had to get all the buy-in of all the different religions in our community. They all had to come up with their own view of it, and then everybody had to okay it. And we only had one disagreement that night. It was between two rabbis on one phrase, and so they just had to work that out. But once they could work that out, it was able to be passed. But just to see the support of the community in teaching that, and I know it was very controversial at the time, and obviously it's still controversial, because it's not, it's not something that we said we really required. That's how I feel. So I just wanted to say that before we vote. I support the other changes that are made here, and all the other options that we're doing. I appreciate the fact of trying to incorporate the finance, and I think that's extremely important for our students to have that knowledge before they graduate, because they're struggling when they graduate. So, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Maestas.
Yeah, I just want to kind of bring back two points. One, it would be nice to know if it's even possible to change that name. I was trying to scroll through the, through the AB 101 itself and reading through some of the language to see if it said that you, it has to say ethnic studies, but I'm not able to get through that. It's a big bill. So if you can find that information out, because that, then it becomes kind of a moot point in terms of being able to combine the two. The other thing is, if, if AB, what did you say it was, the personal finance?
984.
984 does become law, and from, at least from what I hear, there's at least some steam towards that, then that adds five units that we need to include. And, what's that?
Full year.
It, I think it requires a semester, but we also have to offer a full year.
But we have to offer a course that's full year. So the requirement is five. And so if you put the requirement of five with the health piece, that makes a full year course. And then if you have the ethnic studies one semester and world religions one semester as a full year course, then we can have those requirements. Now, it brings us back to our original amount of, of credits, but it requires both courses and it requires the laws itself. So maybe just something to think about, if that, I mean, it's, I'm assuming that that law passes. That's an assumption I can't really make, because we don't know where it is yet. But that's something to think about in the future, is if it does, and we can put a balance into making world religions a required course. Again, it just means that we go back up to 230, which is something I don't, I don't know if we want to do. But that's just something to think about in terms of things that might be coming down the pipeline.
So I want to just add two cents worth. So we've been working on this for a year and a half. One of the primary drivers for this is we have a student population, our EL, our long-term English learners in high school, are having a problem graduating from our system. If we don't put some supports, meaning get rid of some of the barriers, even though everything is good, it's not that it's not good. The structure that we have right now is not, is not as supportive as it could be for our English language learners. You'll see, I mean, our, our English language learners, I think, for graduation is 76%, but all other students are like 91. That speaks to some structural issues. And so I would really, you know, as we look at graduation requirements, adding in, taking out, I really would like us to put the hat on of the long-term English learner, because they have to take ALD courses. So rather than having an elective, they have to take ALD. That's a requirement for them. So no longer do they get the elective that others do, but they have to take ALD, and it goes year after year until after they get re-designated. So as you go to vote on this with, with requirements, I really encourage you to think about looking through the lens of our long-term English learners in high school.
Dr. Naguchi, I have a question. The timing for this vote tonight, is that critical for us to be able to implement it in the timeframe that's needed? Can we get a clarification on the name?
So we're not adopting the course tonight, right? We're adopting the graduation requirement. So I see that as maybe a separate issue from the course name. Does that make sense? So we will have to, the work that we have to do is creating that course, which we can look into on, you know, a name or whatever. But, but the graduation requirement itself is that we, that, you know, we have an ethnic studies course.
I hear...
So for example, we, we have three years of math required, but that encompasses, it could be algebra and geometry. So we have the requirement separate from the course name. All courses come to the board. All new courses come to the board for approval. It'll have to come, that, whatever ethnic studies course we come up with, that curriculum will have to go through the adoption and approval process.
Okay, so my, my question still remains. If we made the decision at the next board meeting, would that hamper our ability to adopt this in, in time for implementation?
And what, so what is... And what, so what is, um, what is the, the question? Is the, is the concern, or, you know, kicking it down three weeks, the world religion as a required course, or is not a required course?
No.
It's the name. It's the name of the ethnic...
Incorporation of, uh, the world religions as part of the title.
So going, coming to the next board meeting, we, we certainly could do that for the name, but I have to say, I need to, you know, trustee Mejia, trustee Irvin spoke about a semester course isn't even enough time to do that. If we also call it world religions, how are we really making that semester course, um, everything that it can be in the, what, eighteen weeks that we have? Now, can we put some of the tenants in there? I don't see how you pull religion away from, from, from ethnic studies. I mean, you, you study, you study ethnicities, you study their, their religions, but it's not to the, the level of where world religions would have gone. So I think that we, I think it's a tough decision. It is a tough decision, right? Um, can we do a naming piece to it? Yes, we can come out to that. But at the end of the day, I think the question is, when we have a required course in ethnic studies, do we want to take that required cour-, course in ethnic studies and put all of the tenants of world religion in there? If that's the case, then we're not going to have an ethnic studies course. You, again, I don't think you can take religion out of that. But if you, by naming it world religion in ethnic studies, what are then the expectations when we ultimately have to come back and get approval for the content? What, what are we setting up for, for the expectation for that course? And that's, that's up to you all. That's, that's in your hands. I mean, we've provided a recommendation that I believe fits the need of my concern with our long-term high school English learners, one. Um, the requirement for ethnic studies, hopeful that the, you know, the financial literacy will come forward. But again, we may need to tool around a little bit with our perhaps English or math or social science, right? We may have to, to take a look at those, because again, I don't want to create barriers to students graduating, which, which we see that we have some barriers. So, um, it's tough to make a change. And, and, and trustee Marx, I do hear you. What I hear from the comments that have come through over the last three weeks, we saw a flood of emails, fifteen, twenty emails, and they were coming from adults. They were coming from adults, the majority of them out of our region. However, some of our key religious leaders, when we said, "Help us write the course", they said, "Absolutely, thank you, we want to be part of it." And we have them on the list. So I, I would love to hear, I think it would be good to get a survey out to students, what, what are their thoughts around world religions and their takeaways and their benefits? Both, um, students in, in the, of the past and also current students. I don't think that that would hurt to get that feedback. But if we have it as a requirement, then we're going to need to start taking a look at some of the core content. Going to need to take a look at either lowering math, lowering English, lowering science, lowering social science, because we can't do everything. So I don't know that this is the answer. That, again, this is the board's decision. Um, we can just present to you our best, our, our best input to how we see we can create the requirements and still meet the needs of, um, all the students.
Good. Well, we have a request for, oh, I'm sorry. Vice president Irvin?
Yes, I just wanted to, now, I was on the committee, the statewide committee that gave the input to AB 101. Um, and so, um, the question that trustee, um, Mastis, uh, came up, that, that, that wasn't a, you know, anything that was discussed about being able to change the name, but there did come up discussion about, um, religion, you know? Um, and, and specifically, they were talking about, uh, Jewish and Sikhs, and, and, and it was agreement amongst that statewide committee that, um, because it actually went back, you know, for revision after they came, after we came to an agreement, or to say, "Okay, this should be in here", because there were some that were going to be left out. But, um, so there was some religious content or, uh, aspect that was, you know, going to be, uh, included as part of that. To what degree, um, wasn't hashed out, and I, like I said, I hadn't read the whole law after it passed to see if the name change were anything like that, because that wasn't something that was part of the discussion, uh, back then. They just wanted to make it sure that it was a, a true ethnic studies, uh, course. And, and then there were some discussions about, you know, make sure it's from a ethnic studies standpoint and not from a sociological standpoint, because you have some schools that offer ethnic studies. Like I used to teach the ethnic studies over at MJC, but it was under sociology one fifty, uh, back when I taught it. And so, but then you go and you take the, you have the courses at Stan State, and they're ES, ethnic studies. And so there's a little philosophical, little battle that goes back and forth, because the professor up there told me, when they asked me if I would be interested in teaching there, it's like, "Well, when you started at, you know, MJC, uh, it was from a sociological perspective, because it was a sociology one fifty course. It's the same content, you know? It just had a different name, you know?" Uh, but it, it never came up to that degree, whether, you know, you can add on, or they were just more concerned about having the ethnic studies course, um, available for students as a graduation requirement.
All right. Do I have a motion for approval of the graduation requirements as they have been recommended tonight? Motion by trustee Mejia. Do I have a second? Trustee Irvin? And, uh, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
Thank you, though, thank you for, I just want to make a comment, just thank you for your consideration, for the discussion, for the dialogue. That helps a lot. And just the fact that we could talk about it in this way, because it's a public meeting, I really appreciate your listening to me and making comments about it and trying to find a solution, which, you know, been quite, but almost, it was really good. So thank you for trying.
Well, trustee Marx, we appreciate your passion and, uh, for the history that goes along with that passion and the, the gift that it's been to students over many generations. We appreciate that.
Those adults were students that went through it, that spoke, so that was kind of cool, too.
And I, I just want to add, I agree, the easy fix tonight would have been to agree to have it all as requirements. That would have been easy for the board to take. Um, I appreciate that we continue to look at the structure of our school district to ensure that we are meeting the needs. And it's, it's hard, so these decisions are really hard, especially for trustee Marx, who's been here for twenty years, right? And so I appreciate, um, being able to move forward. I will come back with some survey data from students, um, about feedback and input, and we'll also, um, take a look at, um, really the outline, provide you all early on that outline for ethnic studies to make sure that when we're writing that, it can get as close to where this board wants, knowing where we've come, and that was with the, um, with the World Religions course. And again, World Religions isn't going away. So be optimistic if it's that powerful, then kids are still going to ballot for it as well. And now it's opening it up to a lot more, well, a lot more students, too.
Yeah, and let's, let's strengthen these courses rather than weaken them. So, thank you. Now we move into, uh, item B eight. This is a report on equity grading, past president and future. And this is a report. And Ms. Hewland, thank you for hanging in with us tonight.
Thank you. Is it on? It sounds like it's on. Okay. Uh, good evening, board president Brown, trustees, Dr. Naguchi, and cabinet. Uh, the purpose of this presentation is to review the work that MCS has been doing, focused on equity grading. We are currently in year two of working with Doug Reeves, Dr. Doug Reeves, from Creative Leadership Solutions. When reviewing this work, it's important to remember, changes take time, and we are building lasting change. We are working closely with Dr. Reeves to ensure that we are making the right moves as a district to achieve lasting change for our students. We have spoken with surrounding districts, including series, um, that are also working towards this equity grading system. This carefully planned and implemented work has resulted in progress toward our goal. The focus of this work is refining the PLC process to collaborate around equitable grading practices and actionable feedback for students regarding their progress towards grade level standards or content areas. The work aligns with goal one in the area of student achievement and goal two in the professional development that is provided to support progress towards our goals. This work was also identified as a recommendation from the Equity Task Force. We are looking specifically at analyzing grading policy through the lens of equity and actionable feedback, and providing the professional learning needed to build capacity of our system to sustain this work over time. As we keep in mind that lasting change takes time, this work has been planned with an eye on increasing the scope of the work and the number of people involved each year. In twenty-one, twenty-two, we began with a small group of volunteers, setting the groundwork. This year, we have teams from every school site, and next year, we propose taking the work back to the school sites with support on each campus. In twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, Dr. Nelson led the work with Dr. Reeves and volunteer teachers from across the district. You may remember that the purpose of the work was to encourage teachers to identify one area in which their students' approach to learning negatively impacted their grades. Dr. Reeves focused on the work, focused the work on helping teachers to identify the problem and then spend time and energy into solving the problem. These proposed solutions were then implemented and monitored for impact. This may look familiar as it's information that has been shared in the past. This is one example of the change project designed and implemented last year. You can see that the challenge identified by this teacher was that students were not completing their work. The intervention or solution that the teacher wanted to try was to increase immediate feedback during class and provide written feedback on Fridays. The thought was that if students knew they would get feedback on their work, they would complete more work. This increase in feedback increased the number of submitted assignments by fifty-eight percent. This is another example of the work from last year. This also focused on the concern about student work completion. The solution was a little different, but the outcome was similar, with fifty-five percent decrease in the number of missed assignments. So last year, each teacher worked independently with their own students, creating a change. Our work has been and will continue to be in collaboration with Dr. Reeves. He is providing professional learning, consultation, and guidance. This year, the work with Dr. Reeves involved a team of teachers and a principal from every school site. Over the course of the year, the teams were meeting for a total of five days. The focus of the work has been examining equitable grading practices, providing actionable feedback to students, and deepening the understanding of how an effectively operating PLC can positively impact student outcomes. Wrapping up this school year, we keep in mind that a significant difference between last school year and this year is that the intervention or change of practice experiment is being conducted by PLC groups at the sites. The group might include a grade level of teachers or all content area teachers. Some sites have chosen to implement the intervention or change project throughout the entire site. So last year, we went from teachers developing a plan independently, to this year, teams are identifying the intervention or change project with PLC groups implementing the change. Each site has selected an area in which students' approach to learning is negatively impacting their grades. They are implementing a change and then monitoring the impact. Then in May, we'll have a science fair type of report of findings, in which each school site shares the practice that they changed and the impact of that change on student learning. There we go. Um, here is an example of the experiment happening right now. One team identified that students struggled to monitor their own learning. The team chose to provide a sentence prompt to support students as they identify their next steps towards mastery. This is an example of providing student support so they can reflectively determine their next learning steps, allowing teachers a way to provide feedback so students know they're on the right track. And we don't know what the results are, because they're currently doing this. Another team identified that when given a short answer essay on an assessment, many students would not attempt to respond. The team decided to provide the first sentence or sentence starter, giving support to students who may not know how to begin a short essay. This is another example of working towards equitable grading. Here, it is the goal to increase the students' willingness to demonstrate their current level of mastery, so that the teacher can provide feedback. Over the course of this year, in working with our teacher teams, we have solicited feedback around what our next steps can be to support them. Teams have identified areas of needed support. Themes that emerged are focused on continued training on how to develop as a truly effective PLC that can have a positive impact on student outcomes, providing learning for teachers and at their school sites to impact a larger number of teachers and their students, and provide support and training to teacher leaders. Moving forward, the work would focus on building capacity within our system and our principals, so they can lead the equity grading work at their school sites. Additionally, providing support for teacher leaders as they work with teacher teams, developing equitable grading practices within their work as a PLC. Tired. There we go. The structure of the work would be built primarily around site coaching from a Creative Leadership Solutions coach. CLS coaches would provide full days of onsite support. The number of days is based on the size of the school and the needs of the school. This is a sample of what the day may look like. The goal is to provide the support each site needs to ensure progress towards district-wide equitable grading practices that are supported through the PLC process. School leadership would work in conjunction with the CLS coach to ensure cohesive support for school sites. Although each site visit might look a little different, this model was implemented this year at Garrison and has shown to have a positive impact. After speaking with Garrison this year, administration and teachers have shared that the site coaching has been helpful as they focus on student learning and develop their own capacity to sustain equity grading over time. The information on this slide is different than in your packet, in the, uh, funding source was listed incorrectly, it should be CSI funds. So the funding for this work would come from the Educator Effectiveness Block Grant, Title II, and CSI funds. The Educator Effectiveness Block Grant is exactly for this kind of work. It is an investment in our people. We are building the capacity of our system to sustain this work and create lasting change that results in equitable grading and student achievement. So I'll turn it over to you for public comments.
Great. Do we have any comments from the public on this, uh, agenda item? Mr. Anguiano?
Well, it's about time I hear about equity grading. Uh, I've been talking to you for three years about equity grading, especially that the sites have so many rules about homework, late homework, late classwork, late quizzes, fifty percent penalties, and all kinds of things that downgrade our children, and especially our Latino children, because a lot of the teachers discriminate against our children. And so I'm pleased to hear about this, but I didn't know that you were doing it at an elementary level, especially because the elementary level, I thought it was taken care of. I have a child at Martone, and they do equity grading already. They, they grade one, two, four, and, and according to the mastery level of the subject, uh, the, the teacher... grades one, two, three, and you expect to have at the first parent-teacher conference to have probably twos, and then the next time you'll have three or fours at the end of the year. So probably elementary schools are not the ones that need equity grading at this point, but it's just the junior highs and the high schools where I see is needed, especially I have a child at Roosevelt and want to buy, no, at Davis. And so I'm glad to hear about it. I read four books from Dr. Reeves and one from Joe Feldman and one from Linda Nielsen about mastery grading and specifications grading. So I'm glad to hear this, and I look forward to a policy that will be enforced. And right now, I guess it's going to be kind of voluntary. And every time I talk to teachers, some of them really oppose that kind of thing. They don't agree with it, especially because we call it equity grading, but maybe we should call it mastery grading. Do you master the subject from zero to 100? You master 25%, you should get a D. You master 50% a C, 75 B, 100% an A, and that's it. Participation, effort, late homework, that should be out of the equation. That's what I think. And hopefully, it will be, you guys will pass the policy. In fact, I got a copy of a policy from Colorado High School that I provided to Mr. Herb, so hopefully, you look into it, and it's a very detailed policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Comments or questions from the board? Trustee Maestas.
Thank you. Thank you for all this report. I look forward to continuing to hear about how this goes and how they continue to work towards this. I'll keep a couple of things brief. The first thing is, you know, when I work with teachers in equitable grading in other districts and other schools across the country, we look at the grades being bias resistant, accurate, accurately about what the students know and motivating students to continue to work. With something that Mr. Aguiano said in the elementary level, when we have a standards-based system, that in and of itself is a foundation for equitable grading. What might not be equitable is the evidence that is being gathered by the teachers. So that's where I see a lot of this happening. The examples that you give, I see a lot of equitable learning, but I don't see anything about equitable grading in particular, especially as it relates to the junior high and high school level. Because that, I could gather and give feedback and gather evidence, but if I'm still giving zero to 50 or zero to 60 as an F, there's still, that's 60 percentage of an F as opposed to 10% increments. So my grading is still inequitable, yet my learning is equitable. So I know that we're taking steps towards that, but I just wonder when we get to the place where we're really talking about grading and not talking about learning. I think there's a foundation in there that your learning needs to be equitable. We need to figure out how to get all students on board in providing this feedback, necessary feedback, allowing students to understand where they are in their learning, where they're going, and how do I get there? That's a step to it. But all those pieces don't work if a teacher is still saying, well, you didn't turn this in on the day it was due, so you're going to get a zero out of 40, and then you pretty much have no way of coming back to show your learning as a C. So those things are important, but what else is important is the ability for us to utilize student learning as the key to giving a grade that is accurate, bias resistant, and intrinsically motivating for students. So I look forward to seeing where we go into that piece because I know there's still a lot of work to be done. I don't really have much of a question other than I'd like to be able to see that as we move forward towards this, to really see how those pieces are being put together.
Thank you. Trustee Daly.
Thank you very much for the report. I greatly appreciate it. I have one question on that. What does CSI stand for?
So a CSI school is a school that the state has designated is in the bottom, help me, 10%. 10% of, for achievement in English and math. So currently, we have several elementary schools that have been identified as a CSI school, and so they receive separate funding with the express purpose of helping those students to, you know, achieve at a higher rate.
It specifically stands for comprehensive support and improvement.
So then I have a couple of comments. One, I agree with Mr. Aguiano where I think we might lose some of the public by calling it equity, but then, Trustee Maesta, the way you explained like 60% and then there's 10% increments, I like the way that you explain that. So now I'm going to use that, just so you know.
All right. Any other comments from the board? This was a report. We appreciate the progress that's being made and encourage the efforts to continue. This is great stuff. Thank you. All right. Moving on. This is now Item B9, Approval of Resolution 22-23-24, Electing to be Subject to the Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act at an Equal Amount for Employees and Annuities with Respect to Recognized Employee Organization. And this is Mr. Henderson.
Thank you again. We're President Brown and Trustees Superintendent Noguchi. I aim to see if I can get the longest titles of items possible. I think in the next three, I've succeeded. So at its April 1st Board Policy Meeting, the Board passed a Board Bylaw, 9250, titled "Renumeration, Reimbursement, and Other Benefits." The bylaw, consistent with the Education Code, addressed compensation, reimbursement of expenses for business conducted as a member of the Board of Education. The bylaw, also consistent with Government Code, defined board member participation in the district's health and welfare program directly, and the circumstances upon which board members would be allowed reimbursement for health and welfare benefit expenses. As a follow-up item to that Board Bylaw, we present for the Board's approval this item and the attached resolution, which is required by CalPERS. We have and have had such a resolution in place covering employees and annuitants. The current resolution adds non-PERS-elected officials, board members, to the list of groups subject to and receiving the benefit from the Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act, and in so doing, the district accepts the obligations as an employer to carry out the provisions as applied and initiate coverage provisions effective June 1, 2023. It's recommended that the Board approve the Resolution 22/23-24. I don't know how that numbering lined up, as stated in the item.
Are there any comments from the public on this agenda item? Seeing none? Any comments or questions from the board members? Seeing none. Do I have a, a motion? It's getting late. To approve Resolution 22-23-24, Electing to be Subject to the Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act at an Equal Amount for Employees and Annuities with Respect to Recognized Employee Organization. Motion by Trustee Marks, second by Vice President Irvin. Those in favor?
Aye.
And thank you for being patient with my tired eyes. Motion passes. Next is Item B10, Public Hearing on Modesto City Schools' Core Values for Negotiations and Modesto City Schools and Modesto Teachers Association Initial Proposals for the MTA/MCS Collective Bargaining Agreement for the '23 through '26 School Years and Board Action to Close Hearing and Vote to Approve Modesto City Schools' Core Values for Negotiations and Modesto City Schools' Initial Proposal and Vote to Receive MTA's Initial Proposal. Mr. Henderson.
Yes. Item B10 is, as you said, the public hearing and board action to allow the district and MTA to begin negotiations for the 2023 to 26 successor agreement. The process known as sunshining identifies the initial proposals each party opens. That will then be the focus of our negotiations. I met with MTA to exchange proposals, and our respective initial proposals are attached to the board item. As noted, both parties open salary and health and welfare. In addition, each party opened two additional articles, with the exception of the district opening Article I for the term of the agreement in order to update our collective bargaining agreement. As required, it's recommended that a public hearing be held on the core values and negotiations and MCS's and MTA's initial proposals. And afterward, the board action to close the hearing and vote to approve MCS's core values for negotiations and approve MCS's initial proposal and vote to receive MTA's initial proposal.
Okay, great. So we'll now close the regular board meeting and open the public hearing. And I'll give that over to Mr. Henderson.
The public hearing is to allow the public any input on those proposals that are brought forth before the board goes back into session and votes.
Okay. Do we have any comments in the public hearing from the public? Seeing none. We're going to now close the public hearing. That's official. And reconvene the regular board meeting, and we're looking for a motion to approve this agenda item. Is anybody opposed to me not reading the whole thing? Okay, good. All right. So motion by Trustee Maestas, second by Trustee Mejia. Those in favor? Thank you. Motion passes. And next is Item B11, Public Hearing on Modesto City Schools' Core Values for Negotiations and Modesto City Schools and California School Employees Association and its Chapter 007, Initial Proposals for the CSEA/MCS Collective Bargaining Agreement for the '23 through '26 School Years and Board Action to Close the Hearing and Vote to Approve Modesto City Schools' Core Values for Negotiations and Initial Proposal and Vote to Receive CSEA's Initial Proposal. Mr. Henderson.
Thank you again. Ditto. Same for CSEA as for MTA, but to give CSEA their due, we're also sunshining proposals with that employee group. As required in Government Code, we're requesting the Board to hold a public hearing to provide opportunity for public input regarding the proposals for negotiating. Then following that hearing, take action on the initial proposals, which will allow us to commence with negotiation between the district and Classified School Employees Association, known as CSEA, and their Chapter 007. This process, again, known as sunshining, identifies the initial proposals, so that each party will then be the focus of negotiations. I met with CSEA President Serpa, and she had Mr. Uplinger and Mr. Yonan present, and we exchanged initial proposals, and those are attached to the agenda item. Suffice it to say, we got a lot of articles that we'll be reviewing, so I won't go over them independently, each one. It's recommended that a public hearing be held on MCS' core values for negotiations and MCS and CSEA 007's initial proposals for the 2023-26 successor agreement. Then upon closing of the public hearing, it's recommended the Board to vote to approve the district's core values and initial proposal and vote to receive CSEA's initial proposal.
Great. So we're going to now close the regular board meeting and open the public hearing and hand it over to Mr. Henderson.
Again, the public hearing is to have the opportunity for the public to weigh in on the negotiations process and the initial proposals that the board will be voting on. Excuse me. The item to vote to accept and receive the initial proposals.
Great. Any comments from the public on this agenda item? Seeing none. We will then close the public hearing and look and return back to the regular board Do we have a motion to approve this agenda item? Motion by Trustee Mejia, second by Trustee Marks. Those in favor?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your patience tonight and for those who have been so diligent in presenting the information to us. It's been a very long but effective meeting. Item G1, Any Items to Be Placed on Future Board Meeting Agendas? Trustee Daly.
I have a question in reference to the public comments tonight. I believe it's highly appropriate for us to ensure that we protect the vulnerable population of the transgender youth that are in the school systems. However, what are we doing to ensure that these cisgender youth are also safe or feeling safe in their community or in their classrooms?
So because that's not agendized, it's not something that we can, that we can speak to right now?
Right. That's why I'm asking for it to be brought up because the comments about the, where do one person's rights begin and another person's ends? So if we're protecting, that needs to be discussed in public if we're protecting one over another.
Well, we're making assumption that that is the case. What I can do is provide the laws that govern our policies and practices. If this is something that you want to bring to the board, that would be a vote between, the majority of the vote, to bring that forward. I think another effective way would be first learn what the laws are and what we're doing in relationship to those laws, and then specifically to any investigations that might be out there. That would be another way of approaching it as opposed to, as opposed, I'm not quite sure what a board report would be, other than outlining the laws that govern transgender, transgender youth.
Trustee Marks.
Could you give us some more information on what the parent alluded to happening to her daughter at the school site? That's, is that, because I would like to know more about that. So I just, anyway, she brought up things I didn't know anything about. So I appreciated all the comments from the public and their, you know, their appreciation to us for how we're handling things. And so, but that was something that I'd just like to have more information on.
Vice President Irvin?
Yes, along those lines, and, you know, I bring this up, but I know there's been instances, and I've read things when it comes to the transgender youth, that there's been instances where students have used this as a means, whether jokingly or whatever, going into the bathrooms, and they're not, they're not really transgender. They're just using it as a way to make a mockery of it or, you know, something along those lines. And so how do we, I think that goes along, how do we prevent that or is there a way to prevent that?
So I think we need to be very careful about the discussion we're having right now because it was not agendized. We can't comment on public comment. I can bring back information for education purposes unless you want a board report and to bring that out. We certainly could do that, but that, we'd need to have four people voting on that. So we can't really comment on that right now just to, just to try to protect you in the Brown Act and what governs our board meetings.
Thank you. So Dr. Noguchi, if you could bring that, this information in a board report within the next couple of weeks, that would be helpful. And then we'll look further into whether or not after that, it warrants a public discussion. All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Second by, a motion by Trustee Mejia, second by Student Rep Patel. And let's go get some sleep.